Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is definitely a good day. As I look at my Chairman of Labor over there and my Chairman of Transportation and members of Council, we've all advocated and sent the letter to SEPTA to strike a good, fair deal with the workers of TWU, which we didn't have been able to reach. So I want to thank the members of this body for their advocacy and being supportive of those efforts. To the matter at hand, we have several panels that will be speaking today regarding the legislation before us today regarding the proposed arena, Seventy-Sixers Arena. And so what we're going to do is call up the several panels for today. Well, Mr. Christmas, please call the first panel.
Walter Su, Raymond Palladura, Ellie Yu, Randall Drain, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
How you doing, Walter? How are you today?
Thank you so much.
State your name fully for the record and please begin.
Okay. My name is Dr. Walter Su. I'm the former Health Commissioner of Philadelphia. I'm a Mount Airy resident and in the Eighth Council Manning District. The owners of the Sixers had a vision of putting a Center City Arena, but they never surveyed their most important customers, their fans. They have touted the idea that only the Sixers Arena can revitalize East Market Street, but they are wrong. As a reality of the unanswered problems of this arena, opposition has grown, not just from Chinatown, but Washington Square West and the Gaborhood. The JMT's study of traffic depends on at least forty percent of Sixers fans taking SEPTA to the game or risk intractable gridlock. Such gridlock could also increase particulate matter, for example, in our atmosphere. This dystopian reality of ambulances being unable to bring their heart attack or bleeding patients to timely care was not of concern to the Sixers owners. The JMT traffic study doesn't consider the reality of Philadelphia, where a shooting at the Lombard Station happened just yesterday, nor does it consider the Flower Show or other large events that will clog up all the parking garages in Center City. SEPTA, which already faces tremendous budgetary problems, will have to negotiate keeping the rails running while having a large construction overhead on top of Jefferson Station. This is also unfunded. SEPTA is an essential route for primary care and prevention for its patients. If the goal is to revitalize East Market Street, we should have a public participation process as noted in a recent Inquirer article. A serious problem is a dead zone created by the federal buildings between Seventh and Fifth Streets, which basically closes after 5:00 P.M. If you want to revitalize that area, why don't you build a second Christmas Market on Independence Mall? It would at least revitalize that part of East Market Street from spring tourists to winter residents. The vitality for streets comes with people, which means strengthening public transportation, including an intercity bus terminal, and maybe even ferry service between South Jersey and Penns Landing. This could bring thousands of visitors to East Market Street. Dr. Snaw. Of note, it is young immigrants, starting families, buying diapers and other essential goods who fill our retail stores. We must fight mass deportation and preserve our immigrant population in Philadelphia. There's been a level of disrespect that needs to be stated. No respect for what it would do to SEPTA, the surrounding neighborhoods, access for emergency vehicles, or the opinions of the Sixers fans themselves, or for that matter, this city council. As Councilman Bass noted, the owners didn't even bother to show up. Why do these billionaires so categorically reject the sports complex, which is somehow good enough for the Flyers, Eagles, and Phillies? If they want to build a stadium arena so badly, why not build it there? What is their beef with Wells Fargo Center, which has just undergone four hundred million dollars in renovations? Well, let's put it this way. If your mother spent four hundred million dollars fixing up your bedroom and you said, "I'm not moving there," she rightfully would say, "You deserve a spanking." Well, city council, you are the adults in the room, and you need to give these billionaires a spanking and let them know, as every neighborhood around this proposed arena has said, "Do not build it here." Thank you.
Just please state your name for the record and please begin.
My name is Raymond Palladura. I'm born and raised here in Philadelphia. I lived in South Philadelphia my whole life, District One, represented by Councilman Mark Squilla. I've been working in medical oncology research at Jefferson for about ten years now. I'm here to express concerns about the proposed Sixers Arena in Center City, its potential impact on patients, the quality of care, and the important work that all of us healthcare workers do every day. At Jefferson, we care for vulnerable patients, including those with cancer. Where timely access to treatment is essential. An arena in such a busy area will create traffic and accessibility issues, making it harder for patients to reach the hospital on time, which can negatively impact their care and overall health outcomes. As someone who is involved in cancer research, I know firsthand how important it is to maintain a stable environment for those patients and healthcare staff. Increased congestion around the hospital in this area will not only affect our patients, but also affect hospital employees, researchers, students, healthcare workers, all who travel in and out of the area on a daily basis. Delays in getting to work can lead to disruptions in clinical care schedules and slow down the essential research that happens there every day. Our research collaborations with external partners and the delivery of essential research materials, like brand-new experimental cancer treatments that I deal with, all would face delays, potentially hindering the progress we've made in advancing cancer treatments. Outward shipments of things like blood tests and tumor biopsies that need twenty-four-hour processing would also be delayed, hindering research and treatment further. We also have to remember that this arena won't be built overnight. Before anything is completed, there'll be years of demolition and construction right over Jefferson Station, one of the busiest transportation hubs in the city. During this time, trains will be delayed or stopped, streets surrounding the hospital will be blocked by cranes, construction vehicles, and all the other equipment. This extended period of disruption could severely affect our ability to provide consistent and timely care for patients. Construction delays, road closures, reduced public transit options will make it even harder for patients to travel to their appointments or for doctors and nurses to reach their hospital on time. For cancer patients in particular, many of whom already have tightly scheduled treatments, this arena could delay this delicate schedule. A delayed appointment is not just an inconvenience for them. It can directly impact their recovery and treatment outcomes. Some participants in my studies have already expressed concern about the proposed arena and said they would try and schedule their appointments around all the different major events that would happen there. This kind of scheduling uncertainty would disrupt care at various times throughout the day, leading to unpredictable patient flow and creative backups in critical areas like our infusion centers. So when patients avoid certain times during the day, and what I mean is, you know, the day before, the day after an event, the morning of the event because they want to get in and out of the city, that puts stress on all the scheduling for all the doctors. Patients will be double booked and all of the care will be backed up. While I understand the desire to bring new business and entertainment into the city, and I understand the desire for the Sixers organization looking for a new home for the team, I'm not against that, I believe it's crucial to just find a better location. There's plenty of room for the arena in different parts of the city, and I'm sure we can find a good home for the Sixers. Patients and employees and students' well-being must come first, and I encourage city council to consider the consequences that this development would have on the city's health and the well-being of all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and begin your testimony.
My name is Ellie Yu, and I'm a queer and trans community member from West Philly. I'm a patient registrar and care coordinator at the Mazoni Health Center, a primary care facility centering LGBTQ+ folks in gender-affirming care and HIV treatment and prevention. I'm also a union committee member of SEIU Healthcare, Pennsylvania's largest union of nurses and healthcare workers, and the only chapter of SEIU Healthcare PA located in the heart of Philadelphia. As healthcare workers serving members of the LGBTQ+ community, we are firsthand witnesses of the impacts of cultural erasure and limited access to life-saving healthcare. A majority of our patients, in addition to being queer and trans or living with HIV, experience multiple health disparities, including housing insecurity, food insecurity, substance use, and overall structural racism and systemic bias. A majority of our patients have incomes at or below one hundred and thirty-three percent of the federal income poverty line and come to us to receive affordable, judgment-free, and affirming care. In the early 1980s, when the AIDS pandemic pushed our queer community into the spotlight and took the lives of many beloved friends and family, Philadelphia community members in the Gaborhood and the rest of the city came together to provide healthcare and financial assistance to those impacted by the epidemic when federal, state, and local governments failed to respond. The Mazoni Center where I work, formerly Philadelphia Community Health Alternatives, is one of many organizations that emerged to provide care to underserved residents in Philadelphia. Our secondary location, which specializes in HIV and STI prevention, treatment, and education, is located in the Gaborhood on Twelfth and Locust, just a few blocks from the proposed Sixers Arena. The proximity of the proposed stadium to our center is concerning, especially considering this history, the city's history of overlooking the needs and concerns of the queer community. The proximity of the arena threatens the accessibility to the already scarce free community HIV and STI testing in the city, which is crucial in preventing the transmission of these infections becoming a public health crisis. Additionally, over eighty percent of our patients rely on public transit to access care. SEPTA is already facing a financial cliff. There is no funding in the current plans, Sixers games, or money for the SEPTA cleaning. The financial burden of the arena cannot fall on SEPTA users. Ordinary Philadelphians who rely on SEPTA, including our patients, cannot afford additional fare increases. This proximity hurts not just our LGBTQ+ residents, but every individual living in Philadelphia. The Commission Traffic Impact Studies have shown that the introduction of Seventy-Sixth Place will unequivocally worsen traffic, leading to Jefferson University Hospital, Center City's only Level One Adult Trauma Center, of which there are under two hundred and twenty Level One Adult Trauma Centers across all fifty states. These hospitals are crucial in emergencies as they are equipped to stabilize and treat the most critical injuries. Patients with the most life-threatening injuries need to be transferred here from other facilities in order to receive the appropriate treatment. This means that in a Level One trauma emergency where every second counts, traffic congestion is life-threatening. While I'm not a first responder or do I not work in an emergency room, I do know many of our patients rely on Jefferson University Hospital as the only emergency room they are close enough to get to. I've seen the notes that get sent to us from Jefferson when our patients are admitted into their emergency room. I've taken calls from Jefferson notifying us of a patient's death. I've listened to family members of patients expressing profound grief at the passing of loved ones due to fatal injuries. And I remember every single one of our patients' names who we've lost since their lives could be so easily prevented. I hope that you're all able to take some time to consider what it is would be gaining from losing, gaining and losing by this arena being built, and if any of it is worth listing the lies of Philadelphia residents who put their trust in you to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name for the record, sir. Please begin.
Hello. My name is Dr. Randall Drain, and I live in the District Five, near Broad and Gerard. I'm a lifelong resident of Philadelphia, and I was born and raised in North Philly. For approximately thirty-five years, I treated many wonderful patients as a pediatrician in North Philadelphia and West Philadelphia. The majority of my patients and their families that I provided healthcare to were African-American. Currently, I go to church in Chinatown at Renewal Church, and I love this vibrant and friendly community. I'm here today not only because I love Chinatown, but also because I feel called to speak out as a physician who's now retired. Let us just review again some of the alarming statistics. Philadelphia's ambulance response times are three minutes longer than the industry standard for safety. Only thirty-three percent of Philadelphia ambulances make it to patients within the recommended nine minutes. Center City traffic is a large part of this problem. An arena would bring thousands more vehicles into the area at one time. The congestion and gridlock from an arena would slow down ambulances even more and put patients' lives in danger. Jefferson Hospital is an excellent Level One Trauma Center, the only one left in Center City. And they see the most critically ill patients, trauma from gunshot wounds, car accidents, heart attacks, strokes. In these emergency cases, every second matters. For every minute a hospital arrival is delayed, a patient's chances of dying are five percent higher. Healthcare is already challenging for many African-American communities in Philadelphia without having to navigate the prospect of delayed care during game time. And just in summary, just like you to consider to put private interests like the arena not above public health. We need to put patients over profits. Any plans for development in Center City need to consider public health first. We urge decision-makers like yourselves to consider the impact to public health and to do what is morally right and just for all Philadelphians before moving forward with plans to build the arena.
Thank you very much. Just have one brief question before I turn it over to my members. I mean, your testimony concerns were raised about the proposed arena that might impact traffic near Thomas Jefferson University Hospital, potentially affecting patient access. However, on Tuesday, November twelfth of 2024, this city council heard from the administration, meaning the mayor's administration, that an independent analysis by Otis, which is the Office of Transportation Infrastructure and Sustainability, found that no significant impact on the Jefferson Trauma Center, with the Jefferson CEO, and the CEO name is Joseph Caciulli, agreeing. They stated that the Tim Street Corridor, they meaning the CEO of Jefferson, Joseph Caciulli, mentioned that the Tim Street Corridor will be reserved for emergency access with police ensuring the area remains clear. So can you give me your perspective on? I only ask this question because we want to be data-driven as well. I ask this question based upon, this CEO who runs the hospital, his primary, it's going to be his responsibility to make sure that patients are treated adequately, and actually more than adequately. And so for him to come out and put his reputation out there, leading the actual hospital that's subject for debate, kind of says a lot, but I wanted to hear from all of you.
All over my opinion, which is, there's politics involved here. He's curry in favor with the mayor, with the building trades. He needs them for his future developments, and he realizes that he's in a very difficult position. I have been told by many staff people at Jefferson that they have been asked not to speak about this from a public relations perspective. And I think that common sense should tell you that 10th Street, there's only two lanes going down that street. I don't know, are you going to have the police block off all the surrounding roads like they do for festivals and so on? And how will that actually make traffic congestion even worse if they were to do that? So I just think that the 10th Street Corridor idea is a fantasy if you're going to have a Sixers game and you expect people to find parking spots. Common sense should tell you that doesn't make any sense, frankly, and I think common sense should prevail.
Just wanted to put that on the record. Next person I'm going to call is Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just, Walter, correct? So I just had a question for you. You mentioned that there should be a space near the Independence Center to do a market, some sort of like marketplace that can help revitalize that particular area near Independence Hall. But I didn't, maybe I didn't catch you correctly. Did you mention what would be a space, other than the arena, that could replace where the current mall is right now? What would be something that could be worth investing in there?
Well, you know, I'm thinking of the Christmas Market, which is surrounding this building right now, which is a temporary structure, which could surround Independence Mall, for example. But during, when the tourist season sort of ends in the fall, we could start having a Christmas Market around Independence Mall and actually use it as a way of getting people to come to the Fifth and Seventh Street area, which usually closes down after five o'clock.
But what would replace the Fashion District? So that's down the street, but I'm talking about the Fashion District, so the mall.
Well, I think the Fashion District suffers from the fact that there's not enough people who come into the town right now and shop there. And safety is a big issue, and trying to improve safety is an important part of that. But also, the fact is, is that we have not, we've taken away the bus terminal from the city. We don't have a ferry service that bring people from South Jersey into the eastern part of Philadelphia. We could do a lot more creative things to bring people in here. We could do a lot more creative things to bring people in here, and we can preserve immigrant families, like I said before, who are the ones who are most likely to buy essential goods for their kids and their families. Not me, you know, I go out and go over abroad, but I don't, young people.
Have you and your team worked on finding, you know, investors and so forth to kind of like counteract this potential development, like could actually pay for something to replace that area? And also, would you be, if the Sixers were to move to New Jersey, how do you think Philadelphians would feel about that?
Well, I don't think that would be a good idea, personally. But my testimony is, why, what's wrong with the sports stadium? If you walk from the NRG Stadium to the Phillies Citizens Bank Park, there's like four blocks that you have to walk through just to get to the Citizens Bank Park. That's a big open space here. Why don't you put a Sixers arena there, faces the Wells Fargo Center, they can point their fingers at each other, and, and, you know, the building trades can build something wonderful right here in Philadelphia.
All right, thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Glutziya.
Good afternoon, and thank you for being here. I wanted to delve into, I also wanted to delve into what seems to be a discrepancy between how Jefferson leadership views the proposed traffic plans presented by the Seventy-Sixers and how Jefferson's emergency room and other frontline staff feel about the plan. So I think these questions are for Raymond, but if there are things that you can't answer or are not privy to, then that's fine. First, am I correct in understanding that Jefferson leadership commissioned an internal study to understand the traffic impact of the arena, or are they using the city's Transportation Impact Study?
So from what I am aware of, they said they conducted their own. That wasn't shared with employees, it said there was going to be. I have not seen it. I'm assuming they might have used what the city had seen and piggybacked off that for some data, but I haven't seen anything.
Can you talk about how Jefferson's leadership informed or engaged frontline staff in this process? For example, was there a town hall or a conversation with staff that allowed people to express concerns about traffic? Or perhaps an anonymous survey of staff and, you know, physicians and nursing staff? What have those conversations looked like?
Again, as far as I'm aware, not a whole lot's been shared or asked of staff. I believe there was one, one town hall where some questions were brought up, and it was going to be asked of the top to kind of come down. Anytime I've reached out for more information or questions, it seemed that, again, it was in the works and employees will know and staff will know, but no town halls or anything like that have been really developed.
Can you talk about what transpired at the town halls? What was the overwhelming sentiment of the staff?
So the, the one town hall that I knew some questions might have been brought up, I was not a part of, so I can't particularly speak on that. From some other just colleagues and things, there's, there's a bunch of different opinions on the arena itself. But again, nothing official is like a platform for us to really share that.
Lastly, now that you have this public forum, what would you want Jefferson leadership to take into consideration when they're thinking about traffic around the hospital?
Again, I mean, I think everyone's concern seems to be just general congestion, patient flow in and out, and like I said, you know, healthcare workers getting in and out of the, of the arena. One thing I've also said that seems to also be kind of thought about is, if I'm a nurse working in my third 16-hour shift and I'm trying to get home, and now there's a two-hour delay on a train because there's a Sixers arena, that's one thing. But also patients coming in and out, I think it just needs to be considered of, all the other parking lots might not be taken care of because there's an arena, so patients have no place to park. So I think that needs to be prioritized before an event going on in Center City.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jim Harady.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for your question. That was actually my first question that I was going to ask also. So just to follow up on that, do you think that it would be helpful to designate one lane in the corridor of the hospital during arena events to mitigate traffic concerns? If we designated a lane just to emergency vehicles?
Is this the honor system? How does this work? That you have police blocking parts of the corridor and say, or traffic cones or something?
I'm not trying to jerk you off, so please don't try to jerk me off, all right? I asked a question, you will show me the respect that I deserve for my seat, just like I'm showing you the respect that you're supposed to.
I take it back.
That was an honest question. I'm asking, if there was a lane designated for emergency traffic, do you think that would mediate the concerns? That was it.
No, I don't think so.
You don't think so? Okay, thank you. I'm good, I'm good, because I can calm down before.
Councilwoman Ruandou.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take one second for us to all think about the fact that a lot of people are coming here to express their opinions on the project, pro or con, and also to do so sometimes in a general way and sometimes in a certain lane. And I think it is, would not be helpful for us to ask just everybody, what do you think should be built in this space? As well as, not everybody's an expert on traffic studies also. I think we should just, you know, listen to what people are telling us and try to ask questions that are directed towards that, because I think that's the way we can get the most from, for example, this panel of medical experts that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Will the clerk please call the next panel?
Mark Malini, Dan Killinger, Ed Gross, Rob Zaritsky, Paul Levy, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Rob, you want to start us off?
Sure.
It was good to see you.
Good to see you.
Mr. Zaritsky, good to see you. Just start your name, say your name for the record, and please begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Zaritsky. I'm president and CEO of Parkway Corporation, a company proudly headquartered just three blocks up, up north Broad Street. My company has been in the parking business in Philadelphia for 102 years and is regarded as a national leader in parking operations, technology, and development. Parkway is also a national developer and owner of office, residential, retail, medical office, hospitality, and parking, with most of our developments taking place in Center City, Philadelphia. Interestingly, I believe Parkway is the only developer with direct experience building for-sale, affordable housing and parking in Chinatown in the last 60 years, hospitality, retail parking in the Convention Center District, medical office for Penn, building medical office for Penn, Jefferson, and Will's Eye with retail and parking in the Medical District, and one of the only developers in the country who is building 880,000 square feet of built-to-suit office, and certainly the only company building that office in Center City, Philadelphia. I am happy to speak out in favor of this project for many reasons. Before the pandemic, Center City, Philadelphia was on a roll, and then everything went backwards. Now we have office buildings struggling, we have hotels hurting because of a drop in business travel and meetings. Retailers, restaurants are hurting and closing, and public transportation is suffering also because of a lack of business activity in Center City. This arena will be the newest, most high-tech, best fan experience in the world when it opens. It can act as a catalyst to encourage businesses to consider moving and keeping their businesses in town, and will encourage more people to want to live in town because we have such a great, walkable city. This arena will also be another amenity for people to want to use our hotels and especially help SEPTA and PATCO. This arena will act as a catalyst to get other developments started in the area. I mentioned earlier all the developments that we have done around this area, but I didn't mention the properties that we have been trying to develop directly nearest to the Gallery Fashion District for 30 years and failed to develop them. This is because Market East has struggled for all that time. But having a brand-new Madison Square Garden, best-tech fan experience facility will get this town cooking like the other parts of Center City have already experienced growth. Lastly, I can assure you that the parking and traffic during construction and after the arena will not be a concern. First of all, we have inventoried 40 parking facilities in that area, and 85% of those parking spaces of the 14,000 spaces within a six-block walk are available at 6:00. We have done the survey also during the flower shows and the car shows, and there is adequate spaces to handle this arena. Secondly, the technology exists today to disperse those parkers, the season ticket holders and prepaid parkers, to eight to 10 parking facilities from Seventh Street to Broad Street. And you could give the, the option for the parking facilities that are closest to the homes of where the people are coming. So the traffic actually will be easier to handle in Center City than it is at the sports complex now. The last thing about parking is that you never want to oversell these eight to 10 parking facilities. So those facilities can still handle the hotel business, the Reading Terminal Market business, whatever businesses that they are currently serving. This will be a wonderful opportunity for the businesses in Philadelphia. Bill Rouse told my father when he was building the Kimmel Center, my father asked him, okay, sorry, my father asked him, why are you only building 100 spaces underneath the Kimmel Center? You could build 500 spaces and handle most of the activity. Bill Rouse said, you want to disperse the people so they walk by Steak 48, Estia, the restaurants and the shops that we have here. That is what a city does, and that's how it benefits from these arenas. So to conclude, this city needs this arena. We deserve to have the best arena in the world in Center City and as another amenity to attract the businesses and, and help to keep all these businesses that we have here. If, God forbid, we lose this opportunity and a business that exists in Philadelphia now wants to invest a billion and a half dollars and expand into the city, and we lose that opportunity, what does that say to the rest of the business community in the country about the business environment in Philadelphia? Please make a good deal that does enough to help the neighborhood communities, but also propels our city forward.
Good afternoon, members of City Council. My name is Mark Malini. I'm the managing partner of Brickstone Realty, a real estate development company in the city. Over the past 38 years, we have completed over 4.3 million square feet of office, retail, and multifamily development in Market East. Although we are developers, we are preservationists at heart, as demonstrated by our resurrection of the Litz Building in '87 into an office and retail complex. We converted City Hall annex into a 500-room Marriott Courtyard, and we restored the Wannamaker Building, which is 1.9 million square feet, into office, retail, and three levels of parking below grade. Litz and City Hall annex had been vacant for many years prior to our restorations. We won two National Trust Honor Awards conferred by the National Trust for Historic Preservation for the Litz Building and Wannamaker Building. Our recent preservation award-winning projects include the Steel Building at 11th and Ludlow, Balm's Building at 106 South 11th Street, and the Hale Building at Juniper and Chestnut Streets, totaling almost 3.3 million square feet of historic preservation in Market East. We are real estate developers, we're a preservationist, and yes, we're citizens who are deeply concerned about Market East. We opened the Litz Building in May of '87. I have walked Market Street East every day since then. I have watched the demise of Market Street with the closure of Strawbridge's, the Clover Store, Strawbridge's corporate headquarters, J.C. Penney, and the gallery replaced with the failed Fashion District. We lost three major retailers recently, Ross Dress for Less, Target, and PetSmart. Those stores were in the Chestnut Street corridor, Collins Project. Five Below's corporate headquarters with over 500 employees have been trying to get their employees back into the office. The biggest pushback is safety. They're working with the Philadelphia Police Department to hire off-duty officers to be present at the corner of Eighth and Market from 3:30 to 6:30 in the evening. West Chester University Center City campus is located in the Litz Building. They have security officers to escort students after their evening classes to parking locations and transit stops. Pre-pandemic, our retail was 96% occupied. It's currently 26%. After 6:00 PM, Market Street East is empty except for panhandlers and homeless. When our tenants leave their offices on empty streets, they do not feel safe and will not come to work. Wannamakers offices are over 55% vacant. When those office leases expire, Market East will not be on their radar screens unless something dramatically changes. The city of Philadelphia may not be on their radar screens as well. Our adjacent neighborhoods should be more concerned about getting people to Market East rather than keeping them from Market East. If we don't get people to Market East, it will be far more detrimental to those neighborhoods. People on the street provide a veil of safety. After working for nearly four decades to improve Market East, I can attest that this, that we need this arena. Most importantly, we need the people that the events at the arena will bring to Market Street. I remember being out with friends for dinner the night of the presidential debate that took place at the Constitution Center. When my wife and I returned to Eighth and Market around 9:00, Market Street was filled with people providing an incredibly energizing and safe feeling. The arena is only the beginning. Its opening is six years out, and there are many other improvements from City Hall to Independence Mall that must take place from Market Street. We have an arena to be the impetus to get this done. Please vote yes to the arena. Thank you.
State your name and begin, please.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Killinger. I'm the president of National Real Estate Development. We are an independent operating subsidiary of the National Electrical Benefits Fund, a pension fund plan that provides retirement benefits to the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and the National Electrical Contractors Association. We are the developers of East Market, a nearly 2 million square foot development catty-corner from the proposed site of the new arena between 11th and 12th, Market and Chestnut Streets, in the, along, East Market Corridor. Sure. Since launching East Market in 2014, our vision was to create a project big enough to be a catalyst for future growth along Market Street. We envisioned it to be a bridge connecting the Liberty Bell, the first piece as a bridge to connect the Liberty Bell to City Hall, the Convention Center to Jefferson, and Midtown Village to Chinatown. 10 years later, and over a billion dollars invested, we've realized our, we've revitalized this four-acre site along Market Street with two residential towers, about 100,000 square feet of retail, a new hotel, and 200,000 square foot office building. This was This was capped off recently by the opening of our tremendous partnership with Jefferson this year when we delivered the Jefferson Health Hannukman Center on 11th and Chestnut Street. This 10-year, over-billion-dollar investment was, in our minds, the first step, the first piece that would hopefully catalyze Market Street east of City Hall. Market Street east of City Hall deserves to be a world-class boulevard. This city has been organized around Market Street and Broad Street since its inception. It has the potential to link all of the neighborhoods surrounding it, as I mentioned, which was the original vision of East Market. There is an opportunity to, with our investment, with Parkway's investment, with Brickstone's investment, with Jefferson's investment, to really be the catalyst and really string together a series of developments along Market Street to bring it to its potential glory. If designed carefully and thoughtfully, which I know the Sixers have in their vision of a truly state-of-the-art arena, 76th Place can not only help connect neighborhoods, but it can also be a potential beacon for public transportation, a true center for Jefferson Station, which now you need to access off of Filbert Street or off of 10th or 11th Street. Really, opportunity to celebrate public transportation in Center City. It can create a tremendous amount of jobs that has been communicated to this panel over the past few weeks and contribute to the vibrancy, safety, and security of Market Street. We are excited to see Market Street's vision fulfilled and support the future growth of the arena. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed?
Good afternoon. I want to start off by thanking the committee of the whole for the opportunity to testify today. When I wrote my testimony, I've been following the hearings very closely in the news. I tried to keep this brief and specific to the hotel industry. My name is Ed Groze. I am the executive director of the Greater Philadelphia Hotel Association. GPHA serves the interest of over 100 hotels, including all Center City properties, and we also represent 160 allied members who are companies who do business with hotels throughout the Delaware Valley. Our members employ 14,000 residents, and we have over 38,000 guest rooms. Hotels generate over $142.4 million annually in tax revenue for the Commonwealth and city through real estate, wage, liquor, use, and occupancy and amusement taxes. Philadelphia's portion of these taxes amounts to $78.1 million a year. I am here today to support the 76ers Arena Project. We are fortunate to have a private investor who is willing to put up $1.3 billion into an area of Center City that needs new development. Many hotels that are located around where we sit today will oftentimes recommend a guest who want to visit our historic assets, such as the Liberty Bell, Independence Hall, to either use Uber or a taxi cab driver to spare them of the unsavory area that currently surrounds Market East. I think we're off to a great start with recent developments that have taken place a few blocks from here next to the Lowe's Hotel, the Canopy by Hilton. We're off to a very good start. Now we need to finish the job. I have seen 8th and Market sit empty for 30 years when Disney Quest pulled out. When that happened in, I think, 1994, we all assumed that area would be developed. Today, it's a surface lot. We deserve better. We deserve better as a city for our residents, for our visitors, and for the overall general feel of Center City. So with that, I think the way we see this arena, it's within walking distance of the majority of our 14,500 hotel rooms in Center City. It's another entertainment option for our guests. It could also be an option for a large event, such as when we hosted the DNC in 2016. They could use that arena, and it would be closer to the hotel rooms that would surround the area. So for those reasons, we, as an association, support the arena.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Levy. I'm chair of the board of the Center City District and council president, members of council. Thank you very much for this opportunity to comment on the proposed 76ers Arena. I want to start at the outset to say that the Center City District has no statutory authority to be in favor or opposed to any development that may be proposed within the boundaries of the CCD, nor do we have approval rights over any real estate projects within the CCD. That is the responsibility of this city council and this mayor. Further, the CCD is a business improvement district that provides services to all properties within the boundaries of our district and is not a registered community organization authorized to comment in favor or against proposed developments. But I am often asked to comment on how a proposed project, if approved, could impact the business and pedestrian vitality, the safety and the assessed value of the balance of the CCD, and how the city and a developer might enhance its strengths and reduce any adverse impacts on the surrounding area. Let me start by saying, as others have, that Market Street East from 6th to City Hall ought to be the prime hospitality corridor in the city, linking Independence Mall, the Convention Center, Convention Hotels to City Hall, the Parkway, and the Avenue of the Arts. And we need to be working now to get this street ready for 2026. But having led the CCD for more than 30 years and having worked with many developers and five mayoral administrations on a range of projects, I am deeply disappointed and concerned about the current state of Market East. Let me list some liabilities and significant gaps in the fabric of the pedestrian experience. Echoing something Ed just said, the south side of the 800 block of Market Street has been a surface parking lot since Gimbel's was demolished to move into the Gallery in The Heirloom Market at 801 Market Streets just announced its closing for lack of customers at the same time as 18 new supermarkets have opened elsewhere in Center City since 2000, bringing our total number to 25. The rest of Center City is thriving. A market cannot make it on Market East. Much of the retail on the south side of, in fact, all of the retail on the south side of the 9th and 10th block of Market East is currently boarded up. The Marriott Hotel does not want to open their doors on Market Street for safety and public behavior reasons. The northwest corner of 13th and Market has been a surface parking lot since 1982. The Wannamaker Building right next to us here has been taken back by its lender, and the fate of the Macy's Department Store is very uncertain. Such is the state of our prime hospitality corridor. Our successful avenues in Center City are not single-use streets, but ones that mix offices, hotels, apartments with cultural and entertainment venues. Adding a sports venue on this street with 18,500 seats that can also accommodate concerts, conventions, and religious gatherings at least 150 evenings a year can have the same positive impact as the flower show, auto show, and boat show that draw as many as 25,000 people to the same area, causing them, as Rob said, to walk past other retail restaurants and occupy hotel rooms. Obviously, traffic congestion is a real issue that needs to be addressed through effective parking management, as Rob indicated, and by strong promotion of SEPTA and PATCO. So too, there will be a need for additional cleaning and public safety services. Even when there are no games or concerts, it is my understanding that the ground floor of the arena will have retail and food establishments that will be open to the public 365 days a year. Residents and visitors will come to buy sports gear even when there are no games, but also to buy food and clothing, just as they do in other portions of the Fashion District. Even more, through strong graphics and signage, SEPTA should be and can be given a prominent signor gateway at 10th and Market. It is invisible now, and we need to signify it there at 10th and Market Street. My understanding as well is that the developers of this proposed arena, a $1.3 billion arena, also have site control and plans for building residential towers across the street on the vacant 1000 block, where there are now only one-story structures. It would be very helpful to do that sooner rather than what was the proposed tower, which would not have been able to be built on top of the arena until 2031. So we have the opportunity for two residential towers immediately across the street with the same pattern and success that National enjoyed. Would somebody with my hair color want to live across the street from the arena? Definitely not. But for young singles, this will be the place to be and live with entertainment. Chinatown needs to be protected. We can learn from San Francisco that prevented speculation when their adjacent office district was booming in the 1980s. They placed height limits over Chinatown and introduced historic preservation controls, and it has won and remains the most thriving Chinatown nationally. Many other economic development programs have been proposed by others, and as I suggest, we need a strong parking management. I will end here. Finally, this project should not be looked at in isolation or thought of as a one-off. A year ago, CCD released a plan for the enhancement of Market East, which can be found on our website. We strongly recommend that if you decide to approve this project, the city should develop a master plan for improvements for the entire hospitality corridor from Independence Hall to City Hall so new additional development can fill in the remaining gaps. Could there be many positive benefits if a new Sixers Arena were to be built in South Philadelphia? Absolutely. But that is not my decision to make. I only want to offer thoughts on what else could happen and should happen if you decide to place it on Market East and CCD. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes council member Nina Ma.
Thank you, council president. I have a question for the panel, but particularly for the person from the pension fund. As you've heard, I heard you're all following the testimony carefully, you heard about the SEPTA issue, that there is really, SEPTA doesn't have the ability to do anything about all this additional work that will be needed in order for this to be a successful project, particularly because traffic is one of the biggest concerns of everybody who live in and around this proposed project. So I just wondered if people, you know, organizations and entities who have resources are willing to participate in looking at how to make SEPTA viable in terms of doing this project? Because, remember, this whole project hinges on 40% of the people coming to the arena taking public transport. And if you don't have it, don't have the ability to give it, then it doesn't work. So I just wondered if there's private equity here that could be participants in this, or how we're going to alleviate this issue around SEPTA? Because without that, I don't see how this is happening. Thank you.
So I would agree that SEPTA is key to the success of SEPTA is key to this proposal, and it's a rare opportunity to really push this city onto the public transportation system. Whether or not our pension fund, that is a decision that is made many, many layers beyond my capability and authority.
So I realize that. That's why I'm putting it out in the public comment, to say that everybody needs to take a piece of this because they're all going to benefit from this, right? So those who are going to be, you know, getting the upside of this is who I'm asking what their role is going to be. The city, one of the reasons why the city is so insistent on this from the mayor's perspective, we have a fiscal cliff coming. We need to have revenue. We understand that. We don't have alternatives that are properly organized or anything that resembles this offer. So if everybody is going to make so much on the plus side, what is their skin in the game is what I'm really asking. How can we change that? I mean, the city has nothing more to give, right? So I've also asked for more documents to actually see that the city is not left holding the bag in certain situations. But I want to know, everybody who's going to benefit from this, because that's what I'm hearing, what is your skin in the game from all of you, not just you, everybody who has told us this is a really great thing, and we can't really proceed unless these safeguards are in place? So I'm not asking you to answer that question now. I'm just putting this out there, that having skin in the game is really important, and I would love to see what that looks like in order for things to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, I would just argue that we have $1 billion invested, which would be our, you know, current skin in the game.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes council member Phillips.
I just want to say thank you so much for coming out today. Your reflections have been helpful in this discussion, particularly Mr. Rizariski. Thank you so much for about, because a lot of people have been really concerned about parking, and the idea of walking across Steak 48, that actually is good for business and so forth, which is not too far from the arena, so that was great. But I did have a quick question for Paul. Paul, you've been doing this for a long time. You have been trying to build Market East in a sustainable way for a long time. Can you just take Philadelphia through the history of development projects that have been proposed for the Fashion District that were almost successful, were successful, just ideas that just never came into fruition? And we're on a verge of potentially having an idea finally come into fruition? But what have you seen over the years that's been proposed in that area? And why? Why they haven't been successful? Why didn't it go through?
You know, the original 1970s vision for Market East was almost a 100% retail district. So we built the gallery first, Gallery 1, and then built Gallery 2. There were only a handful of office buildings on the street and almost all one-story retail. I think we made a very important strategic decision in the 80s when we built the Convention Center, because that suddenly made it possible for the Lowe's to become, or actually, what was PSFS, to become the Lowe's Hotel, for the new Marriott to be built. So we began to diversify the street. There was an attempt, as some people may remember, to put a casino at 8th and Market Street. That went no place. Prior to that, there was a plan to put Disney Quest. That went no place as well. So those are two failed developments. What I think is really important about the project that Dan Killinger described is, for the first time, someone brought not only residential and two really high-quality residential towers, but ground-floor retail, and now mixed with a medical. They're moving the pattern where we need to be moving towards mixed use. We can't rely on just office buildings in the office district. We need to mix in hotel and residential. We can have the former vision of retail-only like it was some suburban shopping center. So what I think has been positive on Market East is the mix of retail and hotel and residential, but there are still a lot of real estate there. And so I see the arena as bringing, you know, not just basketball, but conventions can be in that space, concerts can be in that space. But then, they have already proposed to do two residential towers across the street. The more we do a live-work-play downtown, the more successful we will be. The simple answer is, single-use office districts, single-use retail districts are a formula for failure. We need to diversify, and more mixed use is the key to the future.
Thank you, Paul. And just a quick question for Rob. Rob, if you don't mind, can you talk about your corporation and its plans to build more parking in Center City as a result of this? Do you have any plans for that?
No.
No, yeah, okay.
Can you hear me?
No.
No, I don't think any more parking is, in that neighborhood, there is adequate parking. There is an abundance of parking. Our developments, you know, we had a couple developments. One in Chinatown was going to be residential with some retail and a little bit of parking. That's really what I think it's going to be, is residential. That's what we were focused on, is all residential in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone on the panel. Thank you. Thank you, council president.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes council member Jim Haridy.
Thank you, council president.
Thank you, Council President. Try this again. I got two questions, one for Ed Gross and one for Mr. Zeriski. Ed, can you tell, tell us how, how much business the 76ers Arena will stir up in the hotel industry in Philadelphia? And how much tax revenue those hotels will?
I don't know an accurate answer to that. I'm looking, that's why I geared my testimony towards what it will do for the city. I do know that for every $100 spent on a hotel room, there's about 17% of that, so $17 out of every $100 in room rate comes back to the city in some way. That's not even, and that's not even considering the money spent once the person leaves the hotel room.
That's great.
And it's also going back to, I could easily see another political convention occupying the space. I could see, I did not think of religious groups, but there's all kinds of other uses that could be used, that I have no way of knowing what that'll amount to in the future.
Okay. And Mr. Zeriski, what type of impact will this project have on parking industry, particularly in the area of Chinatown and the surrounding areas? And how much revenue do you estimate will come from this for parking industry?
That's an interesting question. The, the amount of, just one. Oh, hello? I don't think that works. Hello? I'm pretty loud, I'm pretty loud, but, okay, try it again. I don't think there's going to be, there's already, there are already parking, there's already parking business that's out, and this is going to be a smaller arena. So there's about 5,000 fewer, I think, seats. So I agree with the, with their estimates that public transportation will be boosted from this dramatically, I feel. It's so easy to get in and out. And I think their estimates of 3,000 to 3,500 cars coming to, I think that makes sense too. So it's not going to change the, it's going to maybe reduce the demand because there's fewer seats. I would, I would say, Paul, when the Convention Center first opened and the car show was really cooking, we would do 60,000 people on a Saturday. Now, that was spread out over, you know, 10-hour period, but this area of town has a dramatic amount of parking, and most of it is available, especially in the evenings when most of the, you know, when most of the events are. So I think this is a very easy thing to manage, and the technology will, will enable us to disperse this. And I think this, this will be very good for the surrounding businesses by doing it.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's no secret that the parking lot people have been taking some hits over the last couple of years. Do you think this will help them out a little bit, the added people coming in there?
Absolutely. Having another generator, the Convention Center is a tremendous draw for the parking industry, and we've, you know, handled that successfully for 25 years, as long as the Convention Center's been open. This is much smaller than the Convention Center, and, and this is very manageable. It will be good for, yes, the parking industry absolutely benefit from this.
Thank you. No more questions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rolando.
Thank you, Council President. My question is for Dan and Paul, if possible. Dan, I think I've met you before and told you that I love the development that you did on 11th and 12th, whatever that street was, that alley. I spent a lot of my professional career going to municipal court down there, and it was not a pretty sight. So I love what you did. I love the hotel. I think it's been transformative for the area. But my question to you two, it is beautiful, it is vibrant, it is full, there are people. Why has it not triggered more change and more development, both on Chestnut Street, just south of it, and also potentially on Market Street? I've spent a lot of time on Market Street as well. I've, I'm personally, I'm not happy that Macy's doesn't open their front door. I'd love to go through their front door. I'd love for any of those businesses or somebody else to have been taking a chance on some of those businesses on Market Street. And I think it does take a couple of courageous people and/or a development like yours to be an anchor. Curious as to why you think that didn't spur more?
Yeah, I think it's a good question. I think you would have to look at it through the different uses. We have residential, we have a hotel, we have office. I do think that the residential on Market Street, although our front doors aren't on Market Street, they're on Ludlow Street, which is the alley behind, has been a bit of a catalyst for more residential, primarily between our project and sort of 13th and Sansom. There's three or four new residential buildings along 12th Street and along Walnut Street in that area. So I would do think that has inspired residential. I think that the retail's a challenge. We did have some momentum prior to the pandemic, and when the Fashion District opened, it was starting to build. But since the pandemic, we've closed, we've lost Wawa, we've lost District Taco, we've lost, so like, it's a struggle. And now we're trying to fill our remaining spaces, and that's the one piece that's been slow for us. The hotel has stabilized and been somewhat successful, but it could certainly use another, it's kind of shot in the arm from like three or four different investments along Market Street for sure.
Thank you.
Dan, when did you complete the second tower?
2018 and 19 were the first two residential buildings. And they're both 95% full.
Right. So to partially answer your question, Councilwoman, the success of those two towers before Preet lost control of the Fashion District, they bought the properties across the street, which are there to the east. They were planning to do two residential towers there. That momentum was happening, and then we all know what happened with the pandemic. It was a huge setback. We have rebounded from that in terms of job growth. And the plans that the Sixers have announced for residential towers on the south side are simply picking up on what Preet was going to do when they owned them. So I think that momentum was building. I think certainly Mark can speak to the number of properties they were trying to acquire on Chestnut Street. It was beginning to ripple out. We had this huge disruption that we're recovering from, and I think this can get that process going again.
That's how, so you're saying that there was a plan to start reaching down to Chestnut Street, but the pandemic was the barrier to getting that done?
Let me just give Dan and his team enormous credit for what they did, because so much of the criticism of the Fashion District and other projects is that they created a wall and a corridor. And what National did is create a set of walkways through to connect Market Street to Chestnut Street. And that prompted, Brickstone acquired more properties on that street, and it was beginning to filter out. I think there's a chance still, depending on what the Parking Authority does with 10th and Ludlow, that if those two towers go forward on the block that Preet had controlled, you could get that connectivity. And my read of the Sixers' plan is a continuous walkway from Market Street through to Filbert and across all the way to Arch, creating within the building a corridor. Overcoming the north-south barriers is as important an objective as re-establishing the east-west connection. That should be our broad development principles for this street.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gortier.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon to all of you. Thank you for your testimony and for your work in the city. My question is for Paul. I was intrigued to hear you talk about the visioning that you've done for Market East, and I was also very pleased to hear you make a strong statement that we have to protect Chinatown and to bring up some best practices from San Francisco. Given that, I wanted to ask, what do you think about the wisdom of the city's planned strategy to do a master plan after the approval of this, or after the desired approval of this project, given how large the project is and given that the project does pose the risk of displacement as noted in the city's own impact study? And then secondly, what, since you did bring up that we need to protect Chinatown, if you've had an opportunity to look at the Community Benefits Agreement, what's your opinion on the CBA and its effectiveness in mitigating some of the less desirable impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods?
So you've asked me a whole lot of questions in there.
I can go over them again, if necessary.
No, that's fair, that's perfectly, number one, obviously, Chinatown is an absolutely unique destination, place of residence and place of business in this city that absolutely needs to be preserved and enhanced. And as you may know, we're working on a next phase of the rail park, and the stitch can expand, that needs to be knit back together. So we need to create more room for Chinatown to grow. There are lots of opportunities along Vine Street for more development there. I think so, one is we need to get out of this either-or thinking. The city can be a place of many, many successful nodes, and I absolutely think we can do a lot to preserve and enhance Chinatown. I don't want to be presumptuous, but we released a plan a year ago for Market East, which is a redevelopment plan for the street, and we did it in advance of these hearings. Yes, the city needs to do something official, but I urge you to look at that. I'll give you a copy of our testimony with a link to our website, because it urges this thinking of comprehensive east-west, north-south thinking, which I don't think anybody in the city will disagree with. But I don't think, I don't think we're behind the ball. I think we, we should be moving now, and frankly, we need to be doing stuff yesterday to be ready for 2026. There's things that need to happen right now.
Absolutely. I think my question is, if I'm understanding it correctly, the administration has said that they, you know, have included some funding in the, in the CBA, or that the Sixers will include funding in the CBA to seed a master planning effort for Market East and Chinatown. I agree with you that there can, we should be thinking of downtown comprehensively. There can be many successful nodes in the city, but given, you know, your experience with planning and urban design, I think I'm asking you, with a project of this scale that does pose displacement risk, do you think it's wise to say, we're going to go forward with the project before we go forward with the planning?
As I said, I think we've outlined a preliminary planning framework. I think the, the basics are there. What we really need are the mechanisms. And by that, I mean, what are the additional sources of revenue to help cause Market East to continue to improve? Council President, as you and I were talking beforehand, what are the mechanisms for enhancing Chinatown? We need zoning, we need financing mechanism. The vision isn't the easy part, frankly, and I don't mean to say we don't have, need a lot of community engagement. We need to knit this city back together and fill in these gaps. But I think we need to be focusing on how do we do it? What are the financing mechanisms? That's where I would focus.
Would a plan answer some of those questions?
Could I answer?
Sure.
Please. So, you know, we, our, our company has done development in Chinatown and tried, and partnered with Chinatown Development Corporation to, to redevelop 9th and Vine to Race, that block. And like, as I mentioned, as I mentioned in our testimony, we have a lot of inventory to do affordable housing for, for Chinatown. And, and so I don't, the fact that there's seven years until this is going to, actually going to be opened, I think there is time over the next year or two to, to work on things that Chinatown needs and, and, and make progress and, and build some things that they, that they really want. I, I think now is, I don't, I don't think it's too late to, to start the, the planning process and working on these projects.
Thank you. And then my second question, since Paul brought up San Francisco and the need to protect Chinatown, I did want to hear your opinion, if you looked at it on the CBA, and do you think that it will be an effective tool towards that end based on what you've seen?
I am not here to comment on business relationships between the city and Chinatown on the CBA, okay?
Oh, I don't think I'm asking you to talk about the relationship.
I thought you asked me to comment. I may have misunderstood your question.
Oh, I don't think, I'm not asking for your opinion between, on the relationship between the city and the Sixers. I'm asking if you've looked at the CBA and if you think that it could be an effective tool towards anti-displacement.
No, but to me, the bigger tool, in my judgment, I'm not in any way, I have not read the CBA, I want to be clear on that. But what I learned in looking at San Francisco is zoning is the most powerful tool we have. If the fear is that by building an arena on Market East that will create all this speculative buying in Chinatown and destruction and displacement, if you simply historically certified those properties and put current height controls, you completely remove the incentive for any speculative buying. That's what protected Chinatown in San Francisco. There are many other tools necessary. I just want to urge the look at what the zoning powers of this city are, which I think is the most powerful tool to protect Chinatown as it is today. And as Rob said, the number of surface parking lots that could become housing that have been sitting vacant for a long time along Vine Street are huge opportunities for Chinatown to grow.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. This is a point of information. Councilman Squiller, the author of the legislation, I think you introduced several different bills regarding to the preservation of Chinatown regarding zoning. Can you just clarify for the record?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, and, and I want to thank Paul also, because I did reach out to Paul when we were looking at some of our legislation for our Chinatown cultural overlay. And we looked at some of the things that Paul had mentioned in San Francisco and some other ideas throughout the country of protecting a cultural hub in those communities. So the overlay that we have created, as we said earlier in one of the testimonies, was to do an inclusion, inclusion every zoning, a height limit of 65 feet, and a mass and balking ordinance for controlling of small businesses, no more than 3,000 square feet would require a variance. And the third was the ability to limit some of the uses, some of the adult uses, nightclubs, so forth and so on, so people don't come and speculate and, and put those type of businesses in a cultural Chinatown that would normally not have it. Chinatown does have restaurants and bars in, in there already, but the last thing was that we are still working on in that legislation is franchises, where the city is looking at the ability to limit, if you have five or more franchises, that would also trigger a variance. That is something too, that we are also looking at to, to sustain the cultural makeup of Chinatown, where you can't have, I don't want to name a franchise, because if I do, I'll say, why'd you pick them out? But some franchise that you know of that comes in here and they have at least five, that would automatically trigger a variance, would send them to the RCO and to the zoning board and through council for support. So some of those things that we have been talking to and working with Chinatown to come up with are in our cultural overlay. Also mentioned is the TIF that we're still working on, which would, if there is an increase in value in assessments, if the values of properties are going to be increased because of this development, and now the properties or value is going to be more, the businesses are, more businesses want to come in and take over to small businesses, the TIF would then be able to capture that increase, but then be able to use it in that community to offset the chat, the increased assessed values of those properties. So that is something else that we are still working on with the Law Department and the City of Philadelphia and the Chinatown community, who seems very much supportive of something like that. And so they were some of the things that we put in as far as zoning is concerned so far in legislation. And, and I believe too, this overlay, and the reason why it's not part of these conversations here is because I believe that Chinatown needs to be protected anyway, and that will be on its own track in case this doesn't move forward, that will still be put in place for future protections.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gortier for a very brief follow-up.
Very brief comments. I just wanted to make it crystal clear that my questions were not a knock on Councilmember Squiller's efforts. I have great admiration for how much work he's been putting in on this. It was more asking for an opinion on the master, sequencing of the master planning in the CBA.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jamie Gortier. Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, everyone. Just a question for anyone on the panel, for me, first a comment first. I think it's clear that a mixed-use option along East Market is the best, you know, option for our city. It's been clear that I have a keen interest in what happens on Market Street and our commercial corridors. I've held hearings on it. It is something that's very It is something that's very important to me to make sure that our city continues to grow. But given that, that this particular proposal could cause, not that could cause, I think it will cause displacement and, and other things, are there other viable development opportunities at this site that could produce new revenue for the city with more everyday use that put more eyes on the streets, to make our streets safer, to put more lighting on the streets, et cetera? Like, has there been, I guess it's probably more for Center City District than anyone else, but has there been any other options presented that would, that would still be able to, you know, that would still be a new development, that would still be built union, right? And still have the opportunity so to provide a new revenue for the city?
Not an easy question to answer, but I mean, let's just think about the upper floors of the Fashion District. We all used to think that movie theaters was the guaranteed source of driving business and having people come in. How many people are watching movies here? And all sorts of digital technology. The movie theater industry is contracting. That, that would have been an easy answer. Let's have movie theaters upstairs. We did that, and go to most movie theaters today and are not full unless it's some gigantic. You go, you go, okay. Well, my wife's a movie critic, she drags me, I have to go. But so...
You don't blame Netflix for that.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Netflix.
That's like, oh, exactly, yeah. No, and, and look, technology has changed, right? And it's like, how many of us buy the newspaper for news any longer? So we have tried many things. Technology has really evolved. Sports is one of those things, like conventions, that brings people in person together, right? I think it's a very powerful use to bring people together. We tried gaming on the street, that did not succeed, right? We tried Disney. We've had a lot of efforts on the street. But to me, the mixture of residential, the mixture of office, the mixture of hotels, sports is just one use. It's not a panacea. It's not a solution to this street. Strengthening Chinatown, strengthening hotels, strengthening residential, we're doing that elsewhere in Center City, right? We're doing that very well. We're a leader in converting vacant office buildings to residential and hotels. So it's all of the above. There's not one solution to what we need to do today.
And, and thank you for that. Again, given that you said this, it's not one solution. And I, I think that for us as a city, we've only been given one solution to look at. And I think that is what my concern is. I want to see what other options are out there to produce, you know, new revenue for the city. Not, you know, this, and I'm not, I want to say this, how can I say this? I'm not anti-arena at this site. I want to make sure that whatever happens here, if it does happen, is good for the city, right? It's in the best interest of the city. And if there are other alternatives that have less of an impact, right, on communities, but still are able to produce new revenue, produce new jobs, I think that is what we should be taking a look at as well alongside whatever else proposals have been there. But I think just having this, this put in front of us without a plan for the entire East Market area, I think we're putting, what is it, the cart before the horse? I think that's what we're doing here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. There are no other questions and comments from members of the committee. I want to thank all of you for taking time and joining us today, and thank you for your testimony. Thank you very much. Would a clerk? Let's keep rocking and rolling. Would a clerk please call the next panel, please?
Our next panel, could, Mark Malini, Dan Killinger, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Melvin Hairston.
Panel three.
Manira Edens. Jeremy Wolin and Eli Storch. Please join us up at these, please. Just please state your name for the record, and you can begin.
Hello, Council President Johnson, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson and the rest of the city council. My name is Manira Edens, and I'm an organizer with the Philly Black Worker Project. We are a worker center that fights for marginalized black workers. I'm not only representing the thousands of black workers here in the city, but also as part of Black Philly for Chinatown. I was born and raised here in the city and have lived in many parts, mostly North Philly, and I know that every job is not a good job. Many temp workers had their labor exploited behind bars, then come home where they're told to take whatever kinds of jobs they can get and get funneled, funneled into low-quality temporary jobs with no benefits and no upward mobility facing further exploitation. And who benefits from this exploitation? Wealthy corporations and billionaires like the ones behind the 76ers Place. These billionaires have had the city unaffordable and also create and maintain the low-wage economy that keeps black workers poor. Supporters of the proposed 76th Arena in Center City keep praising the potential employment opportunities of the project. The union has already told you all that concession workers are less than enthusiastic about new jobs when they're still fighting for living wages at their current ones. And we have members who have been denied work at these same stadiums because of their criminal backgrounds and are only allowed to work there through a temp agency. We keep being presented with these job numbers like we should take whatever we can get because a job is a job. But if we are serious about issues of poverty in our black communities, then we need to seriously interrogate the quality of the jobs being, being proposed to us. Are these jobs enough to take care of my family? Do I need two or more jobs to supplement my income because this job isn't paying enough? These are real questions that our members are constantly wrestling with. And the bigger question is, based on the 76ers' job creation promises, will there be job projections even turn into job for Philadelphians? They didn't in Camden. They promised hundreds of jobs to the residents of Camden and only produced 11. The reality is, the majority of black workers in the city are not entrepreneurs. And while we want to see more black creatives and entrepreneurs be able to sustain their families through entrepreneurial paths, we must also deal with the truth that is in front of us. Only 5.4% of businesses in Philadelphia are black-owned. This means the majority of black workers in this city are employees, and many of them are non-union and not receiving sustainable wages and are often, and often do not receive benefits at all. There should be many paths to prosperity for all black workers who are not entrepreneurs but work just as hard. This bill does not do that. We heard Councilmember Gilmore Richardson ask about the wealth generation and ownership stake that black entrepreneurs will have in this project. The answer was zero. So if the goal is wealth creation for black communities and the generations to come, it is unclear how this project supports us as a city in closing the racial wealth gap. And this, this is in a city where the black median wealth is $9,000 compared to the $160,000 for white Philadelphians. Yet here we are entertaining solutions that create no real pathway to wealth for our people. Billionaires like Josh Harris, David Alderman and David Blitzer are not actually willing to share the pie. And the question is, will council vote no on this arena because this strategy has not worked before and is, isn't working now? People keep saying they cannot afford their basic needs and, and in the midst of what they're talking about to make the rich richer and keep the poor poorer. This city needs more black community, more, and black communities deserve more. I am so sick of watching billionaires get whatever they want from this city while we, while we are getting thrown crumbs. What does a tax agreement with billionaires mean to a city where our minimum wage is still at 725? We, thank you. We know what our communities need, and we've told you as council this year after year. We need fully funded worker protections. We need fully funded schools for our children. We need fully funded public transportation. The majority of our members use up there to get back and forth, and, and it's trifling. We love our Sixers teams, but we know that we need to invest in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going today? Good afternoon, Councilmember Johnson, other members of council. My name is Melvin Hairston from the UC/People's Town Homes, and I'm an advocacy on housing. What I'm here to talk about is basically, one of the biggest ongoing crises in our city is affordable housing. And with the crisis implemented, we have to have a base structure where housing is protected. Nowhere in this agreement or this proposal is housing protected by any stretch to any of our imaginations here. We, excuse me, there is, the Town Homes was in a place of vast resources, one of the la, one of the last informal structures of a, of a community that spanned four decades with children, grandchildren, mothers, grandmothers, single women and children that were split apart from their communities. And I, being one of those people that grew up 30 years in that community, have seen the struggles of what being moved out. And I, and Mr. Killiger sat here and talked about the work that he's done. But one of the words that, that wasn't mentioned, that he was, that his company was one of the first to try to purchase the Town Homes where our land stood on, where our homes stood, where our babies rested their heads. And the, the upsetting thing is, is that now that that land has been sold and all the housing there has been reduced to concrete and trees and asphalt, that only 20% of the land was given back to the people, that were given back to the city to help the people rebuild, which it went from 70 housing structures to possibly a tower of apartments. That means the community is being downsized. Our community is being downsized from living in houses all their lives to being downsized to apartments, which is squaring in the lives, squaring in the way people are living. And it needs to be pointed out that our structure on protected affordable housing is non-existent. That needs to change. It needs to be something in place. It needs to be a legislation in place where our homes can be protected. Because let's look at it. The community thrives through its people. The city thrives through its people. And if people are on the streets, which is numbers in the thousands in the city, if people are on the streets, how is 76th Place really going to help the communities thrive when the community is struggling to find places to live and low wages? So how is that going to allocate to paying to get a ticket to see the Sixers? How is the, how is any of that going to allocate itself to, to helping the people? Where, we, this is supposed to be a business that's to helping this people. You know, council, y'all are helping the people of the city. Where does this help? Where does this help people find housing? Where does this help people try to find better jobs? Then, then, this doesn't, this doesn't coexist. And I mean, this is just basic knowledge right here that none of this coexists, we're helping the people of this city. I mean, a two, a two to three-hour sports game, how does that help the community of people that are struggling and people being displaced? And I, I'm fitting to see change. And the people that sit in here are fitting to see change. And we have to start with one of the biggest ongoing crises in the city to settle up. If we could talk about building anything, building anything to help economic stress, we got to help the people first, then the economy works off the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Wolin?
Hi, my name is Jeremy Wolin. I'm a PhD candidate in architecture at Princeton University, and I'm here to remind you how much Philadelphia loses by greenlighting an arena in the heart of Center City. First, if the developers we've just heard from have been so responsible for building Market East into the struggling street it is today, why are we taking their word for it that just one more development will be the catalyst we need? What you've also heard is that Market East is physically saturated, and trying to fit an arena on a lot that's already quite small for an arena development means less work for Philadelphia's builders. NBA arenas built on bigger lots have built grand plazas and public parks. NBA arenas built in new neighborhoods have built out transit stops and lines that make a transit system stronger, not push a system like SEPTA further into a death spiral. And NBA arenas built in other cities have provided more money for building just affordable housing alone than the entirety of the Sixers' agreement. Second, yes, mixed use is important, but it has to be smart. Including a use that creates sudden bursts of 18,000 people in a single hour is incompatible to all the other attractions that makes mixed use good mixed use. And who will pay for the team of traffic enforcement and officers that the city's traffic impact study say are needed if we are to keep 76th Place's 18,000 spectators safe on narrow streets that the city's own design impact study says are inadequate for the job? Who will pay for the officers needed to enforce geofencing to accommodate even out-of-date rideshare numbers? Who will pay for lost spending and lost wages when SEPTA's second busiest transit hub periodically closes for six years of construction? Who will pay for the business, lost business opportunities when, as the city's traffic, traffic impact study says, the Sixers' promised 40% target still causes gridlock throughout Center City half the time? Third, adding a project promised to bring thousands of cars into Center City hinders every positive new advancement made to Center City for decades to come. The first advancement to suffer will be the Chinatown Stitch. The Reconnecting Communities Program has already given Philadelphia millions to repair the damage the I-676 imparted on Philadelphia. But all that construction work goes to waste if, as the Sixers' traffic study promises, thousands of suburban Sixers fans gridlock Vine Street regularly. A vote for 76th Place against, is a vote against repairing the scar that separates North Philly from Center City. Now, yesterday, you heard from one of my colleagues, an actually independent economist, that says there's no economic argument for building an arena downtown given the vast harm an arena will impart on existing businesses. In response, the so-called Community Benefits Agreement is an insult to your constituents. Stuffed with free tickets, the Sixers wouldn't sell anyway, programs they should already be paying for, and aid to businesses that's barely a drop in downtown rent, showing that the Sixers simply don't know what it costs to do business in Center City. When Inglewood, California gets $75 million for affordable housing alone, and San Franciscans get $27 million upfront for traffic transit improvements, followed by $10 million for transit monitoring 30 years thereafter, the $50 million on the table now needs another zero before Philadelphians even give it the time of day. To conclude, the cost of building in a dense downtown are great. This is why a fully funded, fully privately funded arena is really nothing more than a scam designed to take away Philadelphia's seat at the table. The scam lets billionaires decide on their own what they pay for and then leave the taxpayer to pay for the rest. Building at a tiny, constrained site like 10th and Market means that while other cities get grand architecture and new public amenities, Philadelphia gets a billboard-covered box. And while it might not look like much, building that box in this location in the heart of Center City comes at great public cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Eli Storch?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and thank you for being on this panel with me. Good, good afternoon. My name is Eli Storch, and I chair the Design Advocacy Group, a 23-year-old nonprofit with the mission of advocating for design in Philadelphia's built environment, both in terms of quality and equity. The steering committee of the Design Advocacy Group has opposed 76th Place since 2023, and I'm here today to reaffirm that an arena cannot do what needs to be done on East Market. It cannot make the most of the opportunities presented, nor can it meet the challenges posed by the site. The design materials presented to the public show that while introducing new problems. It was our opinion, then, as it remains now, that what Market, Market East needs is an influx of 24/7 street-oriented activity, which is something that the proposal for 76th Place simply does not when it was proposed and has not, based on the limited revisions provided, achieved. Much focus has been on the number of days when an, an event will occur. This is significant, but so too is the fact that these events, be they basketball games or concerts, occur in the evening, leaving a deadened street presence facing Market, Market Street on almost all days. It's hard to imagine that the limited interior retail space with minimal street frontage represents an upgrade on what exists presently, regardless of the amount... represents an upgrade on what exists presently, regardless of the amount of glazing on the overall mass of the building. Additionally, locating this proximate to the convention center, another massive building that presents primarily inactive facades, is similarly problematic. Adding another single-use mass, and I would consider this a single-use building, to this area of the city, no matter how many digital billboards adorn it, is not a compromise worth making. Much can and should and has and will be said about the pedestrian and vehicular issues the project faces, especially in light of recent news on the state of SEPTA, the threat to Chinatown, the insufficiency of the CBA, the continued lack of clarity on the actual bounds program and details of the development proposal. I'll leave that to others. Across the street, the East Market Project has already provided a successful model of the type of morning, noon and night mixed-use development, as you heard from the developer himself on the panel before us, that this is, that is what this area requires to be successful, with the mix of restaurants and retail enlivening the sidewalks, including that newly reinvigorated space that we talked about connecting through from Market Street to Chestnut using the project's own site circulation. At 76 Place, the sacrifice of Filbert Street and the deadened rear facade along Cuthbert Street would take these blocks in the opposite direction. As the leaders of our city, we hope that you, along with the Planning Commission and other experts in government and the private sector, will develop and guide a comprehensive vision for Market East that has both long-term family sustaining jobs as well as short-term construction jobs, laying the groundwork for the type of mixed-use development that will thrive rather than relying on a pattern of reacting only to what is proposed. Change is no doubt needed on Market East, however, this project is not it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the Councilman, Jamie Glatier.
Thank you, Council President. My question is for Mel. But first, thank you to all of you for testifying. Mel, I wanted to start by saying I'm really sorry that you were displaced and that you lost your home. I think the fight for the University City Town Homes is just one that will never leave me. I agree with you that as a city, we have to do much more to protect people's housing and to end the housing crisis. And while I do think we had some wins with the Town Homes around the tenant fund and securing the piece of the property that we did for future affordable housing development, I know that it's not enough and I think that you and every single UC Town Homes resident deserve better. I wanted to ask you, as an advocate fighting against the displacement of communities of color, with years in the fight, what's your opinion, if you've had a chance to look at it or hear about it, about some of the measures that are being proposed for anti-displacement as it relates to Chinatown? And what would you add or what would you change?
I think what's most important is people, the people and the leaders of these communities need to be more involved with these conversations. I mean, too many of these proposals, the directives, go past the people. The community leaders need to be a part of that so that can be discussed together on how everybody can thrive. This cannot be a one-way street. This has to go both ways and community leaders should be entered into these proposals and conversations about proposals such as this and other proposals with housing across the city should be talked with not only between the city and the developers, but also leaders of the community. That's one guaranteed thing that needs to change for all of this to work where everybody can thrive together.
I couldn't agree with you more. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Council President.
No, thank you and publicly thank you for the work that your councilwoman did going against the powers that be regarding UC Town Homes. And so I was there, I witnessed it, I watched her through the process and I know she wasn't able to like totally overhaul, overhaul the whole process. She did stand on business on behalf of that community against some very, very powerful interests to make sure that there was some give back and she took it to court and was sued and still is still 10 times taller on behalf of your community in West Philadelphia. So I do want to acknowledge that.
And I do thank her for that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Thank you very much. Would a quick please call the next panel, please?
Regina Hairston, Catherine Hicks, Mo Rushdie, Lynette Sutton, please. Make your way to the up front.
Good afternoon. If you could please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Regina Hairston, President and CEO for the African American Chamber of Commerce for Pennsylvania, New Jersey and Delaware. Good afternoon, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson and members of City Council. Again, my name is Regina Hairston and I serve as the President and CEO of the African American Chamber of Commerce for Pennsylvania, New Jersey and Delaware, representing the collective voice of over 200,000 Black-owned businesses in the tri-state. I am honored to address you today in support of the proposed development of 76 Place, a project that has garnered widespread endorsement across Philadelphia for its transformative potential. As the leader of an organization representing a diverse spectrum of businesses, spanning small enterprises to large firms and encompassing industries from professional services to construction and having surveyed over 100 AACC members and conducted over six focus groups, I can confidently state that the Black business community views 76 Place as a monumental opportunity. The development of 76 Place presents an unprecedented avenue for the inclusion of growth of Black-owned businesses. This assertion is undeniable, standing unchallenged even by the project's most vocal critics. The details of the $1.3 billion privately financed investment by the 76ers' ownership are well documented. Their commitment to diverse business inclusion and equity evident in their comprehensive EOP is robust, measurable and actionable. Leaders like Leslie Smallwood, Lewis of Mosaic, who recently addressed this council, have attested to the significance of these commitments, which extend to the planning, development and ongoing operations of the arena. However, history has taught us that commitments are only as valuable as the mechanisms in place to ensure their realization. Too often pledges to engage Black-owned businesses fail due to the argument that a sufficient pipeline of qualified businesses and workers does not exist. While this rationale is frequently invoked, it reflects a broader systemic challenge. Philadelphia disproportionately does have a low rate of Black businesses and entrepreneurial growth due to lack of opportunity. It is within this context that the 76ers have distinguished themselves. Over the past 18 months, well before formal legislative processes commenced or hearings were scheduled, the 76ers engaged proactively with the African American Chamber of Commerce to identify barriers faced by Black-owned businesses and explored targeted interventions to overcome those obstacles. Importantly, they did not limit their involvement to discussions. They demonstrated tangible commitment by allocating $2 million to strengthen the AACC's ability to support businesses and season this opportunity. This proactive, long-term approach sets the 76ers apart. Through national benchmarking and direct engagement with other franchises, I can confidently state that no other team locally or nationally, and I have traveled to many of them, has undertaken such comprehensive pre-approval efforts to ensure the inclusion of underrepresented businesses. The 76ers' proactive investment exemplifies a best-in-class model for equitable development. Additionally, while the African American Chamber of Commerce's work has naturally focused on our members, the findings of our collaborative, of our collaboration are broadly applicable. We have shared insights that benefit all small diverse businesses across Philadelphia, ensuring that the initiative's impact is inclusive. Moreover, the 76ers extended similar outreach to other diverse chambers, underscoring their intent to collaborative, to collaborate across communities to maximize the project's benefits. The 76ers' commitments go beyond rhetoric, their investments in programs like Everybody Bills and their aggressive EOP reflects a comprehensive strategy to engage diverse businesses and engage their full participation in economic opportunities created by the 76 Place. In conclusion, the development of the 76 Place represents an innovative and inclusive approach to urban revitalization. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. We will ask that you state your name for the record, proceed with your testimony and please be mindful of the two-minute limit, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Councilwomen Gilmore Richardson and members of the Philadelphia City Council's Committee of the Whole. My name is Catherine Hicks. I'm the current and recently re-elected president of the NAACP Philadelphia Branch. Thank you. Thank you. I am honored to speak on behalf of the members of our branch in support of the City Council legislation that would enable the Philadelphia 76ers to develop 76 Place at Market East if approved. On that basis, I urge you to favorably report this legislation out of the Committee of the Whole with the hopes that it would soon pass by City Council and signed by Mayor Parker. In May of this year, I was proud to endorse the Philadelphia 76ers Development Project that would not only bring a major athletic entertainment arena to Center City, Philadelphia, but would introduce significant economic opportunities and other benefits that the 76 Place at Market East project would provide. The NAACP is the nation's oldest, largest and most widely recognized grassroots-based civil rights organization. Our motto is, "When we fight, we win." We always fight in the interest of the underserved and the underrepresented, for those who have been marginalized and feel forgotten, for Black communities who rightly deserve more but receive far less than their counterparts. Philadelphia being identified as the biggest poor city in America should by no means be called to complacency. It should trigger a call to action in all of us, no matter who we are or what neighborhood we live in. The Philadelphia Branch NAACP is supporting the proposed 76ers Place at Market East development because it believes that this development comes at a unique moment, offering a chance to collaborate with the community stakeholders in order to bring about positive change across the city and in the Black communities in particular. This $1.3 billion project, using no local government subsidies, will provide greater access to workforce development and career opportunities and will enable residents in traditionally overlooked communities with significant socioeconomic challenges to find dignity instead of being discounted and thrive more while feeling threatened less. The decision to support 76 Place at Market East did not come easily. We had discussion after discussion with the team. We asked tough questions and through all of the back and forth, we received assurances from the Sixers that we would have a seat at the table, our concerns would be addressed, all voices with regard to the project would be heard, civil rights would be protected and measurable social justice matters like diversity, equity and inclusion goals would be pursued. I'm pleased to share that not only was I made comfortable with the Sixers' responses and commitments, but after discussion in the branch's Economic Development Committee, Executive Committee and General Body meetings, we saw that a majority of the members who participated were on board as well. Many of us agree that by actively participating in the discussions and decision-making processes, the NAACP can help ensure that needs of the communities are taken into account. Our branch regularly fights for criminal justice reforms, increased educational benefits, better election participation and affordable decent housing. And in this instance, having a developer who prioritizes reimagining Market Street East in a way that reserves decades of decline, doesn't displace Chinatown residents or businesses, facilitates continued access to Jefferson Hospital's emergency room and manages traffic congestion and public safety interests is invaluable. We must fight the good fight. Okay, yes. We must fight the good fight on economic empowerment terms where greater access to new wealth-building opportunities that lead to the sustainability of our communities occur. In closing, the NAACP Philadelphia Branch loves our city, is enthusiastic about the prospect at hand and is excited to be on the team. That's why we respectfully urge you to favorably report the legislative package out of the Committee of the Whole so that the 76 Place at Market East can advance as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council President Johnson and honorable council members. I wanted to thank you, first thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today in regards to the proposed Sixers Arena. My name is Mo Rushdie and today I testify on behalf of the Philadelphia Building Industry Association as its president. I happen to also chair the Philadelphia Accelerator Fund and a proud leader in the UDA, both efforts promoting 100% Black and Brown developers to do tens of millions of work in our city. I am not testifying today on their behalf. My support comes from a simple place, jobs, opportunity and great possibilities for an area that has been dead for a long time. Yes, 9,000 jobs, good-paying jobs, family sustaining jobs, the folks behind me here today. Now, I don't remember who asked that question yesterday to Ryan Boyer about a discrepancy about 9,000 jobs versus 900. Yes, it would be closer to 9,000 jobs. The Economic Policy Institute states that when it comes to construction, every $1 million of construction work generates five and a half direct construction jobs. With that math, a $1.55 million project would generate 8,525 jobs. So it's nowhere closer to 900 jobs. Opportunity, yes, I was moved listening to the testimony of Pastor Carl Day about being pro-opportunity, opportunity that can change lives, one that can train a diverse workforce under the umbrella of a multi-billion dollar project, an opportunity that can give hope to the majority of demographic of our population and keeping them in the city. Great possibilities for Market East, a corridor that has been long deprived of any serious attempt for it to be reimagined and bring it back to being a safe and walkable major corridor, one that is anchored by an arena, concerts, restaurants, cafes, new buildings, connecting City Hall to Independence Mall. See, I don't see a $1.55 million arena. I see three or four high-rise buildings, tens of restaurants, 2,000 to 4,000 residential units in that corridor. I see $4 to $5 billion worth of work, a great possibility only for the ones that are capable of challenging the status quo and that can be bold, as Ryan said yesterday. I see an opportunity for Chinatown to thrive with a million people coming to the arena every year. Tens of millions of dollars could be spent inside Chinatown. Now, I want to put the arena aside for a second and I will speak about our culture of no in any major undertaking. I personally fight to get affordable home projects under our city program, approved by this body and approved by some people in the room. I was once recently told, "Mo, I can't allow you to do 50 homes. It's too much. 50 affordable homes, homes that create homeownership and create wealth for the population," that Pastor Day was talking about yesterday, "that gives an opportunity for folks to move up." We have become anti-big things. We have been addicted to the status quo. It's my feeling that we search for reasons not to do things versus coming up with solutions to do them. We are trying to make everything perfect and we lose so much opportunity in the interim. Like many in this room, I belong to the Democratic Party. We lost big in the last election. We have to come to grips with the fact that we lost so many working-class people across America. We lost folks like the ones that want to build this arena. We lost our belief and conviction that we are a party that can strengthen the middle class and ones that creates jobs and opportunity. Let's prove them wrong. Let us restore their trust. Dear council members, please vote for opportunity. Vote for hope. Vote for the working man and woman. Please vote for the arena. Thank you.
Girl Concrete.
Good afternoon, Council President Johnson and members of city council. My name is Lynette Sutton, and I'm the managing partner of Girl Concrete. We are a union concrete contractor that specializes in foundations, slabs, concrete walls, and sidewalks. I thought I would come here today as a business owner to briefly share the perspective of a small, diverse business like mine that is excited about Seventy Six Place but also feels the daily systemic challenges of operating a local, women-led, construction business in Philadelphia. Personally, when I hear of sizable construction projects in our city that have the potential to generate tremendous economic impact for communities and local businesses, I will tell you that, like many of you, we can't help but to feel skeptical. We wonder, will we be a part, included, get a real opportunity on the site, or will we be watching from the other side of the build? In our case, the other side of the construction fence. For us, the opportunities that have truly made an impact for Girl Concrete's workforce are those where collectively the owners, developers, GCs, the city, and EOP oversight committees have worked together to ensure diversity and inclusivity from the onset, not just for cookie crumbs, but real opportunity. That is what Seventy Six Place has the potential to be, a real opportunity for all, including those that surround the build, not just the select few. I may just be a small, local business, but I have full confidence that the Sixers can get this right. We have a history with the team that predates the project, and I know their commitment to the city and diverse businesses like mine is real. In 2021, during COVID, our other entity, Girl Contracting, was selected as one of the first winners for the Seventy Sixers Buy Black Award. Through that partnership, the Seventy Sixers marketed our business to their fan base using social media, radio, and TV, and it actually worked so well that the volume of leads broke our website. They also provided us technical assistance on branding and access to many of their senior executives. This was exposure and coaching that we would have never had or been able to afford. Since then, we've launched another business, Girl Concrete. We're on flagship projects in the city, 30th Street Station and the Bellwether District. And recently, we're recognized as the Business of the Year. While that is all great, it's what we've done with those opportunities that matter. And what we have been able to do is to create local jobs. Our workforce are women, men, returning citizens, apprentices in the trades, people from the communities that actually surround the build, regardless of gender, creed, or ethnicity, people who are talented but often overlooked, people who just need a shot or a second chance. That's my workforce. Look, it's not easy being a woman in construction, let alone a Latina in concrete, but the partnerships and relationships that we've built with the Sixers and because of their introductions have helped us to break barriers and create new jobs. And that is a story that I have not yet heard emerge in these hearings, essentially how the Sixers have helped far before Seventy Six Place was even an idea. So in closing, as a member of the small business community, I urge you to vote in support of Seventy Six Place because, as you know, it's not often that you find an owner or a developer with a path, not a will, not a desire, but a long-term, proven, concrete path to move female, diverse, and local small businesses forward in a way that we can all feel. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, and before opening up to the floor, I want to go back to Ms. Harrington just real quick regarding the African-American Chamber. Is there any recommendations or best practices from your perspective and the, and the work that you are doing that we can do that strengthen or take the DEI commitment to the next level?
Thank you for that question, Councilman. What I did not articulate in my testimony is that the African-American Chamber of Commerce was commissioned to do a study by the Seventy Sixers. What we looked at is if they have a commitment, and I think everyone here knows there's a 40% commitment to Black concessionaires for Seventy Six Place. That's great, that's inclusion, but in order to have equity for that to actually happen, there has to be interventions to get our businesses there. We have plenty of businesses that are ready for that opportunity today, but in order to build a pipeline, we have to be intentional. The African-American Chamber of Commerce has a study. The study is ready to be reviewed by our Board of Directors. Once our Board of Directors have had the opportunity to review the study, it will be made public. It should be made public by next week. There are 10 recommendations that specifically support DEI in this particular project.
And with that include, I know we've had these conversations before, but I want to go on the record with it, besides the concession stands, right? We also know in a project such as this magnitude, somebody's going to get the bond work, somebody's going to do the architect work, somebody's going to get, somebody's going to get the contract for cleaning, somebody's going to get the contract for security. How does that play a role from a professional services standpoint? When you talk about the vending and procurement, somebody's going to provide the food that people want to eat down at the stadium, any event this project move forward. Talk about the role that the African-American Chamber is doing and working with a diverse, inclusive, diverse group of other chambers that you have been working with and that play a role in this particular project.
Certainly. So the work that we have done with the Seventy Sixers can be replicated throughout any diverse businesses, small businesses. It is inclusive of all professional services as well, and so it just does not include concessionaires. The reason why we're focusing on concessionaires in the study is because when you go in an arena, you have to eat and you have to drink. Currently, when you go in arenas, in the arenas that I have traveled to, you do not see Black businesses represented. So this was an opportunity to ensure that this project has representation of ownership by Black businesses. There will be other opportunities for Black professionals to have contracts in this project. We are partnering with the Seventy Sixers to be an advisory for their RFP process. So any bid that's put out, they are working and have committed to the African-American Chamber of Commerce that we will be a partner in that process.
That's different.
It's very different. Their entire engagement has been very different, and I can say, my Board of Directors, for 31 years, have been fighting for this day, and to be able to deliver this report to them next week for the work that they have been doing for 31 years, I am elated and proud. It was not easy taking this vote for the Seventy Six Project. My board members were called, they were threatened for business. My staff received calls, or we were called, everything but the child of God, and I still get those calls and got those calls yesterday. So it wasn't easy to do this, but the Seventy Sixers have been a good partner in this. This is an agreement that we work together. This is what we've been fighting for, right? Black businesses and organizations to have the opportunity to be at the table to conduct business, and that is exactly what we were able to do in this project, and it's a model going forward.
Thank you. Mo Rushdie, in one capacity you had the BIA, but also in another capacity, you created the Accelerator Fund that specifically focuses on African-American and people of color developers having the opportunity to participate in the development that's taking place in the city of Philadelphia. What opportunities are you advocating for to make sure those who come through the Accelerator Fund program, and I know that's primarily on the city side, like turnkey types of programs, but in projects such as this, to help individuals get to the next level from a development and contracting standpoint?
Well, Council President, we have seen a lot of talk and a lot of actions, and there's a lot of efforts that are being done, such as the ones that Regina is talking about, when it comes to the vendors and the contractors base. The UDA is really focused more, and the Accelerator Fund specifically, is focused on creating 100% Black and Brown-owned owners, developers, landlords, right? One of the things that I truly believe in is that we have been cornered through the system, through the government system over decades, of the minority components, whether it's through government jobs, whether through RFPs, and what we're trying to change here is to have an organic growth and having a growth and, and creating a good cohort of 40, 50, 60, 100% Black-owned developers that are doing over $5 to $10 million worth of work every year. We have done this by raising tens of millions from our conventional lenders, who are members of the BIA, by raising money through, and that's not just me, there's a whole team behind us that includes a very robust board and the Accelerator Fund and the BIA, making sure that we are leveraging all of our contacts to make sure that we are actually bringing opportunity to people. We have seen this already working, we have been working, we have worked with Council Member Jamie for disposing public land and creating an opportunity for a dozen developers to be each doing their $3 to $4 million worth of work where they are 100% owners, they're not partnering with anyone, while still maintaining their AOP requirements in terms of vendors that they are actually hiring on these jobs, okay? It is very important that we support that. It is very important that we focus on that end of the business because once you create that class of Black and Brown developers in the city, in all these neighborhoods, then we're seeing organic growth of Black and Brown vendors within all aspects of our industry.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Jim Harrity.
Thank you, Council President. My question's for Mo Rushdie. Mo, you've been doing development for quite a long time, and I know large and small developments, you know, across the city, and we've heard Mr. Levy say that he believes that the way we revitalize Market East is through mixed use and, and other avenues. You know, as a professional, as somebody who has successfully developed properties, because I know a lot of developers who tried to be developers and tried to do projects but weren't successful or weren't able to make a profit. Through your experience, if you were revisiting Market East, what kind of businesses would you try to bring in in your development if you were the one doing development alone, or not besides the stadium, not talking about the stadium, just in the actual area?
Right. So, thank you for the question, Councilman. Now, again, you know, people are looking at the arena as the project of Market East. That's just a start. I have a, a very good contact, but I don't want to put them on the spot here, who basically said that there are already investors and developers who are looking at waiting for the arena to pass where they're already eyeing properties on Market East to make sure that they are going to be building, you know, high-rises, multifamily, want to include affordable housing in it. This is just a gate to a lot of development and revitalization that happens to that Market East. Again, it is very important to recognize that we have a lot to offer, right? This is a big job. There are no subsidies here, right? People can take, talk about, you know, that this might be a scam, this is not, refuse to, to listen to this. There is private money, private $1.5 billion job for a developer that can cross the river, and it's not a bluff, for $800 million and get it built, where these guys don't build it, and we watch them going, going there, right? This is serious. I mean, this is it, right? Do we want to have an arena? Do we want to have a Philadelphia Seventy Sixers that are being built by 9,000 members, good-paying members here? Or do we want to just go back and forth and talk about how we are just, one project is destroying all of Market East? Market East is a dead corridor. I challenge anyone to go and walk at 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock at night. Go and have a walk, take eight blocks going back and forth, and then give me your opinion, all right? I think Chinatown needs to be preserved. I think the, the, the legislations, the companion legislations that were offered by Councilman Squilla to preserve, to make sure that you don't have predatory development that happens in Chinatown, okay? We have to make sure that this does not happen. We have to make sure that we're listening and hearing on what's going on, right? But let us not have the either-or conversation, but because we have seen so many, I am having them right now myself, again, on a way much smaller scale, on $20 million jobs, building a city's program, right? A city's program, and I still get opposition. It's a joke, quite honestly, right? So today, we have a decision to make. It's very simple. We either build an arena in the city, right, and it get all the, the benefits that we can get, the increased city wages for all the members that are going to be working here, the small businesses that are going to be revived and opening up, right? Or we can say, no, this is, you know, not for the city of Philadelphia. That wouldn't be, I mean, I don't mean any disrespect here, but it wouldn't be unusual for us to basically say no, okay? Let them cross the river on the other side, okay? And then we can all play the blame game afterwards. This is, in my opinion, an, an easy decision, while we have Chinatown in our hearts and making sure that we're preserving and making sure we do the best that we can to make sure that they're not displaced.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Mo, you are, you've been a long-term developer in the city of Philadelphia. I just want you to, if you can just talk more about, you know, oftentimes, people can see development as in an adverse type of position. In what ways can development of this stature be a part of the growth of city, of City of Philadelphia to address some of the community issues that people are talking about? How, how can something of this magnitude be potentially helpful that maybe you can talk more about how development is helpful to supporting social issues and even Captain Hicks, if anything?
That's a, that's a, that's a great question, and it's a loaded question. So let me, let me leak you a stat that we had in part of our kind of like last election cycle. 80% of people in the city of Philadelphia think that developer, look at developers negatively, right? That's a stat. Eight out of 10 think that developers, quite honestly, are scumbags. That's the way they look at it, okay? That's a problem, right? I always say in the city of Philadelphia, we start from below zero when we go and approach the neighborhoods with a project, right? We start from below zero, not starting from a neutral place. Now, there are reasons for that, and I think the people in the communities are not wrong, right? They're not wrong, okay? Why are they not wrong? Because we have a lot of poverty in these neighborhoods, right? We have a lot of poverty, but that is why someone like, or an entity like the BIA as a business entity was the only business entity in the city of Philadelphia that came in in support of Council President Clark's MPI and 1% construction tax. We, as a business community, said, we support a 1% construction tax to support, to get and float $400 million worth of bonds so that we can give opportunities for people in the neighborhoods to get that $75,000 down payment assistance that the city of Philadelphia has given, to be able to have people afford and families move back into the neighborhoods and create opportunities, okay? This is, this is big, and, Councilman, this is where I come here and say, you know, do we have a unified vision for growth? Do we have a unified vision that we are sending a message to the people outside of the city of Philadelphia that want to come in, into the city of Philadelphia and spend money and invest in projects and tell them that we are open for business? Or are we going to go through this process and then looking at the city of Philadelphia and be like, you know what? This isn't the city for us. We are at crossroads. We have a new mayor, we have a new vision, we have a new council president, okay? And there is a lot of enthusiasm that going forward, that we are open for business, we're creating creating opportunity and we're making sure we are really going there to the middle man and making sure that they are never forgotten again.
Just a quick question for Regina, Regina Harrison, President of the Chamber Commerce, African American Chamber of Commerce. Will the concession stand, so Philadelphia is very clear, the arenas concession stands, are they going to be 100% occupied, well, not 100%, when I say like the 40, 50% is going to be dedicated to minority concessions and so forth, is it going to be the full concession stand or they're going to have a part in the concession stand? Has that detail been discussed? So, for example, this is like someone is selling cheesesteaks, but the minority business selling cookies, a little bit, you know, that type of situation on the side there.
So, when you get our report that's being published next week, it will be outlined, but the concessionaire's ownership in the 76 place will be 40% black owned.
Got you. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilman Jeffrey Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question I have is for the folks who represent membership organizations. Could you tell us, I might have missed it, could you tell us the number of people you represent and the number of people, I guess, you surveyed for a position on this particular project?
Who was that question? Was that for me?
The membership organizations.
Yeah, it will be the NAACP and African American Chamber, yeah.
NAACP. Oh, well, BIA as well, because you're a membership organization.
I don't know if he, I'm sure all their members, you know.
I think we're close to 100%, but I'll try to find the actual stats.
So, I don't have an actual stat for you, but I'll just go back to my testimony. So, we represent 200,000 black businesses in the tri-state area. About 80,000 of those businesses are in Pennsylvania. When we decided to support this project as a part of the commission study that we did for the Philadelphia 76ers, we surveyed over 100 members and that is in our report and we conducted, conducted six focus groups.
So, 80,000 members in Pennsylvania, only 100 participated in the study?
So, the 100 people that participated in the study was people that were interested in concessionaires, being concessionaires at the particular arena. So, the study is focused around food and beverage, and so those are the stats that I'm giving you.
Okay. Thank you. So, the, the folks who participate in the study would have a direct interest, direct financial interest in if that arena gets developed or not based on concessionaire food and beverage, things like that?
So, I'm not really clear on the question, but we have not received not one person that is a member of the African American Chamber of Commerce who is not in support of this project. That has not happened, we haven't gotten it. Everyone that we've talked to have been supportive of the project, we've sent out newsletters, we sent out information over the last year and a half, and there has not been one person that is a member of the African American Chamber of Commerce who has said they don't support this project.
And for the Philadelphia branch NAACP, we have 1,400 members who were notified about the process of being in support of the 76ers agreement. I don't have the amount who actually voted on it. We started out with our executive committee members and then we sent information out and to, at our general body meeting, we voted on it and 100% of those who participated agreed to support.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilman O'Rourke.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon to all on the panel. I did want to ask, Mr. Rushdie, you raised a point, and this is something that's come up a couple of times, people have said this a couple of times in hearings, and it's been bothering me, so I wanted to ask it. People advocating for cultural preservation shouldn't engage in ultimatums or either or. But if the Sixers don't get the arena, they get to literally pick up and leave and go across the river. Do you, do you think that that's like an appropriate thing, a convert, do you think that's, that is fair, just the right way to approach it? Is it, are folks off for advocating for preservation for the community and then the Sixers are right to pick up and leave in that ultimatum? How would you speak to that?
Welcome to my daily life, Councilman. So, these choices we make even in the neighborhoods, right? I mean, we are all talking about the arena because it's a $1.6 billion job or a $1.5 billion job, but we go through the same things when we're dealing with, when we're going into communities, especially communities that has not seen development, right? And they look at developments as a threat. This is my, my opinion, right? My, my honest opinion from the heart. Anything that, that disturbs the status quo immediately is looked upon as bad. That is a given, that's the city of Philadelphia. I've been doing business here for 25 years and I have never entered into a community where they took me up in arms and said, this is, I'm telling you, even on affordable housing jobs sanctioned by the city of Philadelphia on turnkey jobs, where people will be getting a $75,000 soft second mortgage, I still get that same resistance. So, when you talk about cultural preservation, sorry, cultural preservation, I think that's noble. I think what you're doing is noble to make sure that Chinatown is preserved. That's, that's admirable. I think we should all do the same thing. But it cannot be the reason, it cannot be the reason to deny moving forward. It cannot be the reason, we cannot put progress on our city and growth, okay, in one hand and say, well, it's, either we're going to preserve the cultural identity of Chinatown or you got to build that arena. So, figure it out, because if you build that arena, now you're a bad person because you're really against Chinatown. Not at all. Not at all. When Comcast came with their, with their proposal down in South Philly, I was the first to go out there and be like, thank you, great, let's now support the arena and let's support Comcast and what they're doing in South Philly, okay? Chinatown needs to be preserved. We need to put the safeguards. Yesterday, we had a meeting ourselves to go over the overlays that were put in Chinatown. Typically, you know, a community, a, a, an entity like the BIA is against overlays. We hate overlays because you just can't predict what you can do, right? When you have overlays versus a zoning designation that's already predetermined, it's a problem. But when we heard about the overlay, the inclusionary zoning overlay that was introduced there to preserve affordable housing for Chinatown as part of the idea of making sure that you're preserving the price points for, for Chinatown, we see this as a step to make sure that you're preserving Chinatown, right? When you look at the, the overlay that prevents over 3,000 square feet, I think, or, you know, how many buildings that gets acquired, it prevents predatory, I call it predatory, but you know what I mean, where developers will go in and go and buy four or five buildings, take it down and let's go in and put a high rise in Chinatown and here you go, you break Chinatown. I think that is mitigation factors that you are doing with your advocacy to make sure that this does not happen. But the answer cannot be, let's just not build the arena to preserve Chinatown. That is not the answer, especially because in my opinion, it's not fair for Market East. Market East, we're forgetting Market East.
Heard, if I may, Mr. President, heard, I, but I do, if you can say, is it appropriate for the Sixers, who are the Philadelphia's basketball team, to have only loyalty to, if we, if we can build an arena here, we'll stay, but if not, we'll leave, but then turn the question on community members who are advocating for the community to say, if you don't go with this, then you're, you're being unreasonable? You think it's appropriate to kind of like raise, put leverage that on the community itself that's advocating, especially since so many of us are agreeing finally that Chinatown must be preserved and that they don't have enough?
Councilman, I, I see, see, again, I think the framing of your question, in my opinion, and with all due respect, is flawed. To say that, can they exercise that leverage by basically saying, well, if you don't approve me, I'm going to go to the other side?
That's what they're saying.
No, no, I understand that, but that is a fact. I have an offer, it happens when we sell our homes. If you don't give me that price for my house, I have an offer on my house, is that, is that mean? It's not mean. It is, it is, there is a transaction happening. It's a transaction of $1.4 billion. So, what are we thinking? That, that, that when someone is trying that has a lease that's going to be over in 2031, we think they're leaving it till 2028, 29, maybe we're going to solve it, maybe we're not? No, no. They're business people, they're looking at options. Their first option, and what they really want to do, is they want to stay in the city of Philadelphia and they want to be the Philadelphia 76ers. That is what they want.
I would say for the record, and I'll be, Mr. President, I thank you, Mr. Rushdie, for this, I would just say, it, it's still, it's still challenging for me to accept the idea that, that a team that has a place to play, that folks have gone out of their way to try to keep and support and to provide for already where they exist for an arena that don't, won't be up for a few more years, and then to say that if that team doesn't get exactly what they want in this particular place, there are folks who have, and I have since from the beginning said, not against an arena in concept, but an arena in the community that the community is saying they don't want there after having heard the pros and cons for it after a series of meetings, and then say that somehow, you know, there's some loyalty there, it sounds like their bit, their desire, which is the tip for billionaires, is to make more money, but there is no loyalty coming here or being expressed from the team, but there's expected to be loyalty from the community to let them do what they want to do. And I think that's a bit unfair to ask the, the community and as an elected representative at large, I think we should point that out. I hear this, this, this back and forth, it just, it troubles me that this idea that we're, we're being unreasonable by providing an ultimatum, but they're not. That seems a bit disingenuous, but thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if you don't mind for just 10 seconds here, if, if, if the owners of the Sixers were looking at their bottom line, you have my word, we would not be sitting here today. If that is what they want, their bottom line only, they would not be here today, okay? It's simple math, man, it's simple math, Councilman. They, there is no bluff here. It's, 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 if it's a business transaction, they will not be sitting here today. So, I, I do think that there is a serious will on behalf of the 76ers of being here, want to build it by the folks sitting here today, make sure we're providing an opportunity for, in the city of Philadelphia, reviving a Market East corridor, put a CBA that makes sure that it is, is, is covering Chinatown, making sure that they are protected. I sincerely, sincerely believe that that is their true good intention to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your schedule today and for your very informative testimony. Well, Mr. Christmas, please call the next panel.
Mr. Shamar Pitts, Christopher Rogers, Erica Guadalupe Nunez, Mercedes Bonia, please come forward.
State your name for the record, you can begin your testimony.
Anybody, one of us, any? Okay. Christopher Rogers, thank you all for having the time. I'm here representing as one of the growing coalition of black Philadelphians who are taking an active public stand against the Sixers Arena proposal, not in our name. I've been pretty successful in local collaborative efforts to preserve and sustain some of the Philadelphia's cultural treasures such as the Paul Robeson House, Hakeem's Bookstore, and most recently, the national historic landmark, Henry Asaw Tanner House and Strawberry Mansion. I want to thank Councilperson Richardson for their support there. These passionate personal efforts speak to the importance of uplifting and maintaining the rich social fabric and deep cultural heritage which informs sustainable, equitable, people-responsive neighborhood development. Yet, before all that labor, I'm a neighbor and I strive to be a good one as my mother taught me. Being a good neighbor means being willing to stand against specific practices and policy proposals that promise more immediate community fragmentation and cultural heritage displacement than their future speculative and wishing on a star benefits would serve our public interests. Not too long ago, the National Trust for Historic Preservation uplifted the Henry Asaw Tanner House to America's 11 Most Endangered Historic Places in 2023, and we were honored to reach this designation alongside our neighbors in Philadelphia's Chinatown. Since, the National Trust has led continuing efforts that evidence how many of America's Chinatowns are disappearing through public and private attack. The ongoing initiative showcases how these communities face compounding threats and assemblage of racialized and economic forces that put at risk these special old places where countless lives, memories and stories began and continue to unfold. Indeed, black neighborhoods such as Strawberry Mansion where the Tanner House is located and Cobb's Creek where I live navigate the changing same. For my public testimony then, I reminded the audience that we black and Asian Philly folks working to preserve our cultural heritage come to recognize the legacy of common resistance that we share from our community self-determined projects against the onslaught of accumulative, collective and continuing policies of structural inequity and imposed austerity. I reminded folks that we have not yet been saved, but inspired by those who came before us, we continue to love and fight for our neighborhoods. Councilperson Kendra Books testified that 70% of Philadelphians stand against the Sixers Arena proposal. Many of us who watched our beat-up Sixers, okay, struggle through all our season openers were forced to watch over and over again a 20-second clip where Mayor Parker exclaimed "The power of the people is more important than the people in power." And yet, the mayoral administration came to endorse the Sixers' money-yet-unpopular proposal and went further to suggest that their current low-lease concessions would be the best that we ever achieve. Is this faith in the power of the people or an admission that who truly are the today's people in power, even as you mentioned, Councilperson around, the powers that be that even impacted the people's townhomes? To whom does our city's elected representatives truly bend its ear? From whom do those elected by us to represent the freedom dreams of our communities take its directives? What faith do we ultimately display in the collective wisdom of everyday working families about what's right for them and their neighborhoods? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mercedes Bonia. Good evening, members of council. I serve as the founder of Leveraged Economic Solutions, which is an economic development organization that has served the state of Pennsylvania and the city of Philadelphia as a whole. I also serve as one of the newly elected executive committee, committee members of the NAACP Philadelphia Branch 2346B, in which in Philadelphia, we have more than one branch. Catherine Hicks is our president. We have 1,000, 1,400 members, in which we just held an election on 11/16/2024, whereas only 172 members have voted. To turn attention back to Councilmember Jeffrey Young's question, we were not given any email in reference to any vote of any 76ers place. We were not sent any text messages and I, as a member and a longtime member of the NAACP, serving as an at-large member in many different branches over this country, I am horribly, I stand horribly having to go against the NAACP right now because there's a lot of ambiguity here. We have not voted and there have been meetings that we have all not been a part of. I am in opposition completely of the 76ers place as the NAACP Philadelphia 2346B member and executive committee member. Going into re-inhundance plans as well as other plans and being a part of traffic reports, there is no full plan for Market East and/or East Market area. There are no full plans. There is not a straightaway plan, there are not plans that effectively communicate port authority plans and/or bridge plans. I want to recognize the African American Chamber of Commerce of three states, which is stated, Pennsylvania, New Jersey and Delaware, which in New Jersey, I am a native of, we already have an African American Chamber of Commerce, in which now we have two, given that we have Pennsylvania, New Jersey and Delaware here. So, I do want to recognize that they did give some numbers, but those numbers are skewed by only contacting or allowing 100 people within the organization to speak for a body of businesses. To preserve time at this panel, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Excuse me one second. The chair recognizes- The chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to thank you all so much for coming in and for your testimony. And it's nice to formally meet you in person. I didn't realize if that was you relative to the Tanner House preservation, something that I've cared deeply about over the last several years. And I just have to uplift someone who's not here, who brought that entire situation to me and really helped us work through that challenge, which is Queen Judith Robinson. She brought that situation in North Philadelphia to my attention. We worked with our former council president, Darryl Clark, and together with the support of this body, we were able to help with ensuring that we provided needed and necessary support for the preservation for Tanner House. So I just wanted to thank you all for those efforts and uplift in her absence, Queen Judith Robinson, for the work that she has done for us to be in this space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Erica Guadalupe Nunez, and I'm the director of Juntos, a community-led Latina immigrant rights organization in South Philadelphia, fighting for our rights and against the criminalization of our people. We adamantly oppose the construction of an arena in Chinatown and recognize it not only as an attack on its immigrant community, but as an attack on all immigrant communities across this city who have built and transformed its sectors to serve as thriving community and cultural hubs that speak to the true essence and resilience of our city. From north to south, east and west, we say no to an arena in Chinatown. There's a movement phrase in Spanish, "El pueblo no se vende, se ama y defiende", which translates to "The people are not for sale. They are loved and defended." The attempts to sell out Chinatown for the pet project of a few billionaires will do nothing more than rob our city and its communities of the resources we need to thrive. From infrastructure to operational costs tied to the stadium, the proposed drain on state funding, and a tax break that would cost our public schools $7 million annually, the 76ers Arena Project is nothing short of a plan to sell out communities. Instead of this misguided proposal, we need a true commitment to fund affordable housing, mental health services, schools, libraries, public transit, and much more. The developers behind this plan are making false promises about the supposed benefits of this proposal. And we are calling on you to open your eyes and keep your hearts with the people you serve. Many Latina immigrant community members work in Chinatown. We know that wealthy white team owners are not considering their well-being with this proposal. An attack on Chinatown makes all of our communities vulnerable to the beast of gentrification. If you allow this to happen in Chinatown, what keeps places like Calle Nueva safe? Latina immigrant communities have similarly transformed the Ninth Street Business Corridor into what it is today. How long before wealthy elites eye it for another development project, robbing decades of transformation by our residents, both past and present? Immigrant communities have built neighborhoods that serve as vibrant networks of care, support, and cultural exchange out of necessity. Places like Chinatown are not accidents of geography. They are the results of generations of collective effort by people striving to create spaces where they can thrive, find safety, and access critical services and affordable homes. The construction of this arena will disrupt and dismantle these networks, leaving thousands of residents vulnerable not only to the looming threats of political agendas like Trump's, but also to the systemic inequalities that remain unresolved in our city. Know this: The Latina immigrant community does not want an arena in Chinatown. We stand in solidarity with its residents and the broader community until this plan is no more. El pueblo unido jamás será vencido. The people united will never be divided.
State your name and record for the record. Please begin your testimony, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Council President, how you doing today?
I'm doing pretty good, Mr. Pitts.
Yes, my name is Shamar Pitts, and I represent South Philadelphia Grace Ferry Neighborhood. And I'm part of an environmental justice organization called Philly Thrive. And we've sat here and we've heard a lot of testimony today. And, you know, it's hard to see and witness what's going on because this is history in the making, believe it or not. And I wanna be on the right side of history. And I know that people see opportunity in building an arena in Center City. They see opportunity there. But at the expense of a community that has made their life there and that lived there. So I don't think it's appropriate that we even consider uprooting and displacing a community that has lived there and has a history there, right? I don't think we should even consider doing something to people like that. And a lot of times, people ask me about why would I be in defense of the people in Chinatown? It's because when my community was displaced, I didn't like it. I didn't like to see the gentrification going on in a Point Breeze section of South Philadelphia and in the Grace Ferry section of South Philadelphia. I didn't like it. And I don't think that is appropriate for that to happen to anyone. No doubt about it. I want jobs for my black people. I want jobs. All of the people that come and talk about the jobs, we can get the jobs, we can build it anywhere we want. We can build it anywhere we want. And we can bring our minds together to figure out how do we infuse Market East? What should we build in Market East that's gonna be a good economic development in our city? We got the minds to do it. We don't have to sacrifice the people in Chinatown to do that. And we don't have to... And I think that also, you know, I'm so glad that, you know, our Councilman O'Rourke was here when he asked about, you know, is it appropriate to say, "If you don't build here, then I'm just gonna leave," right? Well, you know, my thing is, if that's all it takes for you to leave, you wanted to leave anyway. You wanna hold us hostage 'cause you can't get your way right here. You could build it somewhere else. We could revitalize South Philadelphia where all the stadiums are at and build it there, a new state-of-the-art facility, the best in the world. We could build it right there, and it won't displace anybody in Chinatown. How about that? We can come up with ideas where is a win-win. We can do that, but we gotta be willing to do it. We can't just be on the wrong side of history and do the wrong things 'cause the wrong things is done to my folks all the time, all the time. And they come and they promise us jobs. And just like the young lady from Girl Concrete said, when you come and you promises jobs and all of that, we skeptical. And that's an understatement, skeptical, 'cause I'm going on your record. I seen development in this city that I have never seen before in the last 10, 15 years, with laws in place, 40% minority participation, and all of those things. And we don't get them jobs. We ain't been getting them jobs, so I'm going on your record. So all them people in the building trades, when they come and say, "Build it", yeah, I want you to build it, 'cause I want the jobs too. But we ain't been getting them. We get hired, and with that 40%, we get hired. And then, within a couple months in that job, that job gonna be there for seven years. They gonna be building seven to 10 years. Within a couple months, we all laid off. So what good is it for me if it's gonna be jobs there? What good is it for me if I go through the apprenticeship program and get the skills? What good is it for me if I'm not gonna be able to work? 'Cause they don't wanna spread that money out. They don't want me counting the money at the end of the day. I'm not gonna work there seven years, five days a week, with overtime at $60 an hour as an electrician. They not gonna allow that. They haven't been allowing it. So why do we think, all of a sudden, the Sixers care about us? And they gonna give us jobs? And they gonna look at people like me and say, "We gonna give you an opportunity"? Come on, man, don't do that to us, man. We ain't that stupid. Don't do that to us, man. Don't do that to us. Don't use us like that, 'cause that's what they doing. Thank you.
Thank you very... Thank you very much, a very passionate testimony. I thank all of you at this moment. I wanna acknowledge Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Bonilla. Just, you were alluding to, I guess, Market East. Could you just, you know, go a little bit deeper into what you think some of the current issues are with Market East?
Some of the issues right now, and I also, for the record, am a Pennsylvania real estate agent that deals with commercial as well as residential real estate. So, for the record, I did not state earlier that I am a Pennsylvania real estate agent that deals with commercial real estate as well as residential real estate. I think some of the issues in Market East that were touched on earlier prior to our panel sessions, parking. There are a lot of, again, you stepped out for a second, but there's a lot of ambiguity when it comes to numbers. People come here and give testimony and/or speak, but they don't actually have the data in front of them. Each panel, they keep saying, "We don't have numbers," right? I think the biggest part with not just Market East as far as the data, I think it's kinda the problem here is what's displayed here about not giving numbers here. It's not something that has been done, but in economic development, we can survey and actually write those plans. So you can't necessarily say, it's like statistics. The numbers are not facts, but you can actually try to give an account. I also serve as, well, I actually am a MBA candidate at Georgetown University McDonough. So I actually deal with statistics and data all the time. So a lot of that's not given here, or they don't have the data to say, "Can you give me a second, Council President and/or members of council, so I can actually give that information?" So one of the major things, again, is parking, as well as those residents that live here. We see people that might be coming here for colleges. Philadelphia, we have some of the best colleges in the world. Even though I'm a native of New Jersey, I live here in Germantown, serve as a block captain. So I'm also, I deal with a lot of my past RCO secretary for Baton Hill. So I have done a lot in the economic space. So what I see is that in Market East, a lot of, and I stated before earlier in session, that the community leaders are not involved with planning, and they're not brought to the table. That's what I'm seeing currently in the lay. Uh-oh, Council President, I'm sorry, y'all.
The chair recognizes the gentleman from the First Councilmatic District, just for a point of information regarding... How many meetings have you had? And how long has this process you have been working on as relates to addressing the issues as relates to the constituents that you actually represent in the First Councilmatic District, which includes the Chinatown community?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've, it's been meetings for a little over two years on this process. And with Chinatown community, we had over 32 meetings, which was verified by PCDC in their testimony of, he said, dozens of meetings. And we also have met with not only the Chinatown community, but at least close to 100 meetings altogether with all the community stakeholders as far as the people involved with Washington West, with Jefferson Hospital, Sep, Midtown Village, Center City District, Reading Terminal, Convention Center, a lot of other stakeholders that were there that compromised the number of meetings and discussions that we've had along the way before legislation was proposed by the administration.
And for the record, what are the purposes of the meetings that you were actually having in terms of you, your staff being there? What was the purpose?
To discuss the challenges and concerns of the nearby residents and/or the support of an arena proposal that was gonna be put at the gallery site between 10th and 11th and Market.
And for the record, what has you done with the actual information you actually received?
Well, as we received them, we, as part of the negotiations after legislation was proposed, we met with Council President's office and the mayor's office to go over some changes in that proposal and modify, modification of the CBA to include what we call an arena district, and also to introduce additional, what we're calling companion legislation, to look at cultural aspects of Chinatown, to create an overlay. And still working on a proposal for a tax incremental finance legislation to address the concerns that we heard during that process.
And last but not least, for the record, are you willing to still continue to meet with the various stakeholders and groups in Chinatown and surrounding community regarding the actual legislation that's proposed for you that you're actually sponsoring?
Yes, we met, we had a public meeting as late as Monday, Monday this... Monday this week, last week. No, Monday this week, we met to discuss other activities on the legislation, other proposals and possible compromises, and have continued to have meetings with all the stakeholders ongoing, even through this process, not only during this hearing process here, but during times when we're not at this hearing.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mark Squiller. I wanna thank everybody for your very, very informative and passionate testimony. And with that being said, I wanna ask for Mr. Christmas to please call the next panel.
Chris Mullins of McGillan's Alehouse and Fergus Carey of Fergies. Please come forward.
State your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Fergus Carey. My name is Fergus Carey. I'm a business owner in Philadelphia for the last 30 years or so. I am also the president of the Board of Midtown Village Merchants Association. And this is my associate, Chris Mullins from McGillan's Alehouse, and he is also on the board of Midtown Village Merchants Association. We are here today, we are a business organization, and we are in favor of the arena coming into 11th and Market. We are pro-business, and therefore, we felt that it was the right decision to make.
That's your testimony? Okay, that was quick. Go ahead, sir.
Alrighty, short and sweet.
Please state your name. Please state your name. Said a whole lot without saying a whole lot. State your name for the record, sir.
Sure, it's Christopher Mullins Jr. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address city council. I am the third-generation, pardon me, owner of McGillan's Old Alehouse. McGillan's is Philadelphia's oldest tavern. It was founded in 1860 by William McGillan. My grandfather and his brother purchased McGillan's in 1958. And in 1993, with the opening of the Convention Center, my parents saw the opportunity for Center City and decided to purchase the bar, take it over, and, you know, see where things go. And I've been with them since 2006. The Convention Center changed the face of Center City, many for the good. However, there are still challenges to the building. But at the end of the day, as predicted, it brought thousands of out-of-towners and locals into the core of the city. We remember what our neighborhood and much of Center City was like prior to the opening of the Convention Center. It has spurred new hotels, restaurants, sidewalks are filled with visitors, and it's a much more vibrant place to be. But we also do know that the Convention Center is not enough to sustain Center City. For 50 years, we've watched the slow decline of Market Street, where once five department stores lined the avenue. Macy's is the last one, and that, we hear, is closing too, potentially. News of giant closing has rattled our nerves. And retail, we know everywhere is in decline, but what's gonna fill Market East? Because it's not gonna be retail. There are so many holes along the blocks of Sixth, from Sixth Street to 13th and Market, and we've been told too many times over the years that things will turn around. Yet, we still wait, and today, we're debating over a privately-funded massive project that will bring millions of dollars in revenue to our inner core, provide jobs, and drive traffic into an area that sorely needs the activity. Plus, this project comes with no private or public financing, which is unheard of, from what I understand. We realize the effect on Chinatown is a concern, and we share those concerns, but we know provisions can be put in place to protect this historic neighborhood. However, the benefit to all of Center City needs to be considered. As far as traffic goes, this weekend, we have the Philadelphia Marathon. For two days, traffic is disrupted in all of Center City. For two days, traffic is disrupted in one of, in all of Center City from every corner. And yet somehow life goes on and people take public transportation. The flower show affects more people per day than the arena will hold in total, though it is mitigated by the use of public transportation. People from all over the region during that flower show come downtown and enjoy the highlights the city has to offer. The city's alive, it's energized, and an experience that people take back to their communities and say how wonderful Philadelphia is. This project will not fix all of our problems, but it will be a shot in the arm. It'll bring people into the core instead of concentrating all of the business in South Philadelphia. These jobs, the jobs that this will bring will also allow cleaner streets and safer streets. My family, our employees and our community urge you to support this once-in-a-lifetime project with which our city so sorely deserves. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Carey and Mr. Mullins, I want to thank you for being here. I was in your industry for seventeen years. People come in, see your place packed, they think you're a millionaire. They don't realize it's a seven-day-a-week proposition, that you have big payrolls, that you have the insurance going up, government's usually coming after you for how many permits you have to pay every year. You know, I understand the plight of the small businessman. And I'm just happy that you guys are not only worried about your own establishments, that you have this organization, that are worried about other establishments in Center City. It's this working together that I think is so important, that makes us the city of neighborhoods and the city of brotherly love that we're, while some would argue you two are competition, I would argue that a rising tide lifts all boats and hopefully this project can do that. And I will say this, we need you over this next couple of years to give us input and Councilmember Landell will be working with you with regard to twenty twenty-six. And I know she's been doing a great job with all of the establishments for outdoor dining, what extended permits we're going to need for twenty twenty-six when we have the FIFA World Cup. So I just want to tell you, we're not always the enemy. We're here to help. And when we can be helpful over the next couple of years, please use us. Thank you.
Just for the record, where are your two businesses located?
We're both in Midtown Village Merchants, in the middle of Midtown Village. Fergies Pub is at twelve fourteen Sansom Street. McGillens is on Drury Street. We are basically a spit from this place right now.
All right, thank you very much. Well, and thank you for taking time out of your schedule and being here today.
Thank you very much.
Last and final panel, Mr. Christmas, can you call the panel, please?
Bobby Chang, Lauren Lowe, Eugene Park and David Acosta, please come forward.
Thank you. Just please state your name and begin your testimony.
Hi, my name is Bobby Zhang. I'm the honorary president of the Hou Yu Association in Philadelphia. I'm also the Secretary General of Pennsylvania United Chinese Coalition. I immigrated to the United States in nineteen eighty-two. At that time, I was living in Washington DC.
在一九九五年搬到惠城
I moved to Philadelphia in nineteen ninety-five. The CBA introduced by Councilmember Squiler, it's a terrible one. Chinatown was never consulted and it's a pitiful deal for the entire city. The DC Chinatown is on the brink of disappearance. What happened over there foreshadows what will happen to Philadelphia's Chinatown should the arena get to build. The fight of the DC Chinatown community against displacement intensified after the Capitol One Arena was built. However, the community that used to have thousands of residents now has only less than three hundred remained. With only fifteen businesses owned by Asian, small Asian-owned, and to that city, that was an economic death zone. With low traffic, with low foot traffic, with dozens of empty vacant businesses as well as languishing chain stores. So let what happened to the DC Chinatown be a warning. It's a warning that shows what would happen to a community if a developer were to allow to develop, there results in displacement of residents. And a warning that once the local business were chased out, the entire community will lose its unique characteristic. And what would happen then? And Chinatown currently is in danger. Our business, our community relies on small businesses with many of them provide services. But because of the pandemic, our community have suffered great setback. Many businesses did not survive during the pandemic. We saw many families have lost their lifelong savings. In addition, our community is facing hate due to the pandemic. In twenty twenty-two, we just started to recover. What we need from the city is support and help. We need someone to recognize the value of our community. And support us as we start to rebuild, especially in the face of anti-Asian violence. However, we got this arena that will destroy us. It's only silence from elected officials in the face of our concern and inaction. This arena can be built in any place. No matter where it's built, there will be the same jobs. Or even more when it's built somewhere else. They used to, they already tried to build one on the waterfront, but they were rejected. Why would we accept a proposal that will disproportionately affect our community? Chinatown is a working-class community of color that has been long marginalized. This feels like yet another instance of anti-Asian hate. We're still trying to just survive. Thirty percent of our restaurant business rely on takeout and delivery services. All of our customers need to be able to access Chinatown in an easy manner and also need affordable parking. To countless Asian-American and immigrant family, Chinatown is not just a place for dining. It's our spiritual, cultural and historical center. Our community won't survive the six years of construction and Chinatown won't even be around to see the arena open. You cannot mitigate an existential threat. You cannot offer community benefits that will pay for our history, our culture or our relationships. Their so-called economic study has ignored the hundreds of businesses, their contribution to the economy. It also ignored the danger this small business face. It seems like our pain, our cause seem to be meaningless to this city. But after a hundred fifty years of hard work, we've earned the right to stay here. We're one of the oldest communities in this city and it's also, it's also an indispensable part of the city's culture and history. We're calling on all Philadelphians who have a heart to oppose this project. To support our community, to show that our community is a treasure asset of this city. Join us and to fight against those predatory developers and this now, no arena in Chinatown.
谢谢
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Thank you, President Johnson, and thank you, members of city council. I'll keep my comments brief because I know you've been here all day. My name is David Acosta. I'm a poet, a writer, a community organizer, a cultural worker, creator and a lifelong resident of the city of Philadelphia. And I am here to speak against Bill two forty-nine six six. I am part of the arts and culture community, a community still reeling from the financial impact of the COVID pandemic. You need to know that our theaters and cultural venues will lose money if the arena goes up. The Wilma Theater, the Kimmel Center, all of these theaters and other arts organizations that bring in millions of dollars to the city every year will lose money because the arena's traffic and construction will blackout customers. Restaurants will lose money. We can't even afford to fund SEPTA. How can we afford to pay for this arena? You have on your desk a list of a thousand signatures from cultural workers, creators, executive directors of cultural organizations in the city, and signatures are still coming in. You also have on your desk a copy of an anthology that I had the pleasure of editing along with Mia Kang on the meaning of Chinatown to the forty-four poets who contributed to the anthology, the oldest poet being in their late sixties, the youngest poet being a nine-year-old Chinese-American boy. I think that the arena and these people who sign this petition see their livelihoods as threatened. We know the economic study inflated the jobs and revenue numbers of the arena. Approving it would destroy thousands of jobs and replace them with very little. The arena also poses an existential threat to the gayperhood, Washington Square West, the Love District and other nearby neighborhoods, Old City, Quinn Village, Bella Vista and Hawthorne. The great deal the mayor is offering is great only for seventy-six-place billionaire developers whose lawyers drafted it. It is a bad deal for the rest of us and for the cultural institutions that will be impacted through six years of construction and subsequent gridlock. The project will also destroy one of our city's cultural treasures, Center City's last remaining working-class community of color. History will judge you harshly if we greenlight this project, destroying a cultural enclave of great value while financially harming perhaps irrevocably important cultural institutions which make us a class world city. To those of you who stand in opposition to the building of the arena, thank you for asking the hard questions on behalf of the citizens you represent. We call on all of you to exercise true leadership and say no, support the community's right to self-determination, honor Philadelphia's identity as a city of neighborhoods. In conclusion, finally consider the negative impact this proposed arena could have on the culinary and on the culinary and gastronomic richness of our city. People come to Chinatown for some of the best Asian food to be had anywhere in this country. Many of these are small, family-owned businesses whose survival is threatened by six years of construction and subsequently the rise in affordability for housing which follows gentrification. Please say no to this project and address the real problems impacting quality of life for us all. Better schools, affordable housing, clean streets, and a fully functioning public transportation system. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and record. Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Lo. I'm a writer and a teacher and a District Three constituent with family roots in Philadelphia's Chinatown. My father and his six siblings all grew up in the neighborhood, or as we say in Cantonese, they're juk sing, born and raised. As I've become an adult and moved around for school and for work, Chinatown and Philly have always remained home. A longtime member of the Philadelphia Suns, I now also coach the girls' 14-under team on Saturday mornings at the Crane Tower. Now 71 years old, sorry for putting your age out there like that, Dad. My father, like most fathers, has a lot of stories, but there are two days in particular that he recalls with extra clarity. The first was from October 1976, when he was at Passon's Sporting Goods at 8th and Arch, which in a classic old-school Philly way did the uniforms for the professional teams in the city and the Holy Redeemer School teams, where he went to school. And he found out that day that Dr. J was being traded to the 76ers. We all know how that went. The other day is from three years before that, in August 1973. He was 20 years old, and an early phone call woke him from his sister. "They're trying to knock down Holy Redeemer," she said. "You have to get over there." It was raining lightly that morning. He phoned his best friend, grabbed his sister's wide-burned hat, and sprinted to 10th and Winter. Bulldozers had already begun demolishing row homes while the neighborhood was still sleeping. Without hesitation, he climbed atop a mountain of rubble with his friend and neighbors. You've probably seen that photo if you're familiar with the Vine Street Expressway fight. It's black and white, and there's this small, determined group staring down cranes, a banner beside them reading "Homes, Not Highways." To this day, my father actually doesn't consider him an activist, though I've spent many occasions trying to pin the title on him. We don't always share the same politics, and I kept thinking this was a place where we could overlap and I could get him to admit that I was right about something. But as I've gotten older, I've started to see his point of view and really appreciate it. Can you imagine how much you must love a place to put your body on the line like that? This is my lineage. I'm speaking to you today with equal parts pride and pain. It's an incredible opportunity to advocate for our community alongside our elders, and yet I'm also frequently aware of how often they've had to do this over and over again in the course of their lifetimes. I'm also aware that this fight is not just about Chinatown. It's a fight that's held over and over in low-income communities across the city and in neighborhoods of color. At the same time when the Vine Street Expressway fight was happening, in that same era, there were so-called urban renewal projects that raised the Black Bottom neighborhood in the 60s and where university-adjacent development continues to drive displacement at an increasingly rapid pace today. To the note about community meetings with Chinatown, I would just like to flag that while I appreciate the very specific number offered by Councilman Squela about 32 meetings, PCDC was actually here yesterday, and John Chin remains on record standing in opposition to this arena. And furthermore, he said that while they've had many conversations, the current CBA actually does not reflect anything close to what's been discussed about what's needed for Chinatown's protections. So I'd like to just remind everyone of the axiom, it's not about quantity, it's about quality. And while you may be in meetings, often which in the last year or two years, we've only received 72 hours notice. I think the last one we found out about on Thursday or Friday for a Monday meeting. Are you actually listening to us in them? Finally, I'm struck by this "build it" slogan that we often hear. I can get with a good chant, I grew up playing sports. But what are we committed to building? Are they flashy developments that promise a quick fix, silver bullet solution with near-sighted promises of revitalization? Are we committed to building up our communities through serious investment and engagement and long-term comprehensive visions for planning? I fear the looming scale of the proposed arena has prematurely narrowed the conversation about what's possible there, not only for the future of Market East, but for the city as a whole. Facing school closures, a SEPTA death spiral, affordable housing crisis, and a gun violence epidemic, it is true that we need real change, and that does include a reimagining of the blocks along Market East. But do we really believe that a few billionaire owners, who, by the way, are responsible for a star-filled roster that's 2-11 right now and hasn't made it out of the second round in many, many years, are really the best that we have to offer? As we approach the bicentennial and 250 years of Philadelphia, we have to ask ourselves, what will our legacy be? What do you want the city's legacy to be in another 250 years? And perhaps more pressingly here for Council today, what will your role be in creating that legacy? I do believe, perhaps naively, that a better, more equitable city is possible for all Philadelphians. These don't have to just be empty words that we're exchanging here. You can take action. You can vote against the arena. You can put forth a real request for proposals and bring community stakeholders to the table throughout the process to help drive the process. We just need the courage, vision, and collaboration to fight for the city we want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or rather evening. My name is Eugen Park. I'm a social worker, Temple grad, and queer performer. I perform as the only Asian king in the city and was recognized for my art and activism in PGN's most influential queer community leaders. In addition to starting my own nonprofit for queer youth of color, I'm also a part of No Arena Gaborhood, a community group made by and for queer people citywide who are in solidarity with Chinatown. We're backed by almost 2,000 queer folks from all over greater Philadelphia that have signed our petition against the arena. We support Chinatown and all communities harmed by predatory development. I want to talk about two main things today: local history and local democracy. I'll start with the history. Others have given examples of predatory development in Philly, but no one's mentioned yet how Chinatown and the Gaborhood were practically connected once, and how predatory development harmed both. I'm talking about the Convention Center, which displaced Chinatown families and erased an entire group of Black-owned gay businesses on Philbert and Arch. We still deal with a lot of racism in the Gaborhood, and a huge part of the reason is that half of it was literally erased. Queer people of color are pushed out time and time again. This month, two minority-owned and oriented Gaborhood businesses got priced out. It's not a coincidence that both these owners of these businesses oppose the arena, because they know what it's like to have to fight for space and capital as a minority within a minority. It's not surprising when you hear other people talk about the Gaborhood, or try to call it Midtown Village, without actually ever engaging with queer folks of color or our performance community. Level Up, my home bar, and the only Black-owned bar in the Gaborhood is closing next month. That loss is more tangible to me than anyone else here, because I'm in the chain reaction. Ken is losing his space in the Gaborhood, the folks working for him are losing their jobs. I'm losing my home bar and so many show opportunities, and once again, we're losing precious, rare, community space for queer folks of color. In 2020, Midwood Development, who destroyed the 12th Street Gym, first whitewashed the mural of Gloria Casares in the middle of the night without any consent from the community. They also made promises about preserving a cultural treasure and proposed a so-called public art bonus to appease people, and of course, didn't keep the promises. Doesn't that give you déjà vu? Just like Midwood, this arena developer doesn't care about a democratic process with the community. They don't even talk to us. Their idea of community benefits is stuff like free basketball tickets for the same school district that has to close schools, doesn't have AC, and literally kids are breathing in asbestos. But they're about to get a $400 million tax break? We don't expect a self-interested developer to have a democratic process. They don't work for the taxpayers, but City Council does. And you should be working on urgent things like schools and SEPTA, and you should be the strongest guardrail ensuring a democratic process. But instead, we have an undemocratic process to the point where you're physically silencing free speech. I'm talking about what happened here on October 24th, as you may know from the ACLU's warning letter yesterday. All right. Two cops on behalf of City Council dragged Debbie Way out of here. She told you about it, but I was there too. I followed them to document it on video, and as I joined them on the elevator, one cop literally hit me without any verbal warning. The other cop pulled out a baton and swung it at me twice, all for coming here as a citizen of Philadelphia and to use my First Amendment right for free speech. I came here again today to testify in front of y'all with no guarantee that my safety would be protected today. This is just to show how undemocratic this arena process has become. You literally are manhandling a 67-year-old woman, and I just wanted to come here and ask you, what kind of precedent are you trying to set? The arena aside, do the people of Philadelphia really feel safe to come in here and share their opinion? It took a lot of courage for me to come here, to come back into these four walls and into this room. And I really think that y'all should think about that. And think about the 70% of Philadelphia that really does not want this arena. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Hearing none. This concludes the business for the Committee of the Hold today. I recognize Councilmember Marcus Squola for a motion to recess the public hearing to Thursday, November 21st, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
It adds a moving property segment that the Committee of the Hold will be recessed to Thursday, November 24th, at 6:00 PM. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Committee of the Hold stands in recess until Thursday, November 21st, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, for your participation.